Thank you. Good evening. Fall to order this January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. We'll start with our meeting minutes from January twen- January ninth, twenty twenty-four, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the ninth being our second session.
I think your regular meeting, your January eleventh being the closed executive session special.
Okay. You have a motion on that. Harrison.
Um, the minutes look good to me. No, no changes needed.
Second. Ron, seconds. LeBron, anything? We have our full complement of.
Mr. Levy's on Webex, so you got all of it.
I just want to make sure. Any other comments, edits for the minutes? Say, the proviso with executive session, I'll just say, uh, our executive session, no votes were taken, no action was taken.
It's noted in the minutes.
Thank you. So vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the, uh.
Okay, so we have six ayes and Commissioner Ford abstains. Next item is our discussion of pending litigation. F Associates versus TP and Z, fourteen sixty Post Road, consider enter entering into a stipulated judgment sustaining the appeal. We have, I mean, Wilson or?
No, it's, it's not. So if you want me, I can.
Why don't you give a quick microphone, yeah, please?
Improv minutes of eleven, where we had a closed executive session, just to kind of recap, if you recall, fourteen sixty Post Road is the location of Pelacano Restaurant. They received a special permit to do a rooftop vestibule to allow an outdoor dining deck that was predicated on a previous variance that had been granted for parking. The neighbor, their social site took an appeal of that variance and Judge Radcliffe, the Superior Court recently sustained that appeal, basically nullifying that. So since the variance, since the special permit application relied on the variance, the judge has indicated that, uh, the court should enter or that, basically, the recommendation is that we should consider, that you should consider entering into a judgment stipulating for, um, what is sustaining the appeal because the variance is no longer valid, even though there was a subsequent regulation amendment, the court ruled that the special permit has to stand on the regulations that were in place at the time. The record, you know, the ball would be in the applicant's court if they want to come back and pursue an application that doesn't need variance because at the time, the variance was required, it wouldn't be potentially going forward, but acquire a new applicant. So you're being asked to consider a motion to allow the town attorney to turn to sustaining the appeal.
Uh, let's get a motion on, but probably entertain a motion to sustain the appeal. Commissioner Braun.
I moved.
Motion to sustain the appeal.
You have a Stevie.
Uh, second, Commissioner Levy, is that your hand up for that?
Yes, yes, second.
Not what I was expecting, but that's fine. Um, Commissioner Braun.
Question for, for Mr. Went. So, um, so they applied for X amount, they got a variance. It was appealed, he'll turn down the variance. And since then, we've changed our regulations to allow outdoor dining. Do you recall, could you refresh my recollection? I don't remember. Was this within that expansion that we approved our regulation tax amendment?
Wait, it wasn't at the time. They were proposing four hundred and seventy-five feet. Uh, the regulation amendment allows up to four hundred feet without any additional parking. They'd have to modify their, their proposal if they want to go forward. Uh, they're not, doesn't look like, uh, they'd be successful in getting a variance in the future. So if they want to proceed, they would have to trim it down to no more than four hundred square feet pursuant to the regulation and then have a new hearing and you guys can.
Would that still come before us?
Yes, it would.
Even though it didn't? Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, we should stipulate or authorize the town attorney to stipulate to sustaining the appeal. Our prior action was predicated on the existence of a variance, which has since been set aside. And accordingly, uh, our action cannot be sustained.
Any other comments from the commission? Just to echo, I mean, it seemed fairly straightforward. Um, it is not an order of the court, somewhat of a recommendation, but as the, our counsel has suggested, and I think just as we've learned, the common sense is it's not, this needs to be, uh, the appeal needs to be sustained. They need to come back to us if they should choose to move forward. So. Unless there's any further comments or questions. All those in favor of the motion to sustain the appeal or sustain the appeal, excuse me, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Seven hands. So that passes unanimously. Moving on to applications to recommend a public hearing. First, I'll call the two, first two together. zoning regulation amendment, application of Pequot Realty LLC to amend section twenty-five point seven to consider payment in lieu of below market rate units. Next item twenty-five, two fifty Pequot Avenue, special permit application of Pequot Realty LLC pertaining to an eighteen unit residential development and design commercial district. Mr. Went.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, two fifty Pequot Avenue is in Southport, the corner of Pequot and Old Post. There's a Chase Bank. This is the next parcel towards the Post Road. It's a two-story building. It's a, it's a odd property that the second floor of the building is at grade level at the street. Driveway ramps down to the, to the lower level floor. The proposal is to, uh, to basically demolish the existing building and a proposal for an eighteen unit residential development. In conjunction with that, uh, the applicant is seeking, uh, some discussion and consideration of a regulation amendment that would allow there to be a payment into the space trust fund in lieu of providing affordable units under appropriate circumstances. And so these two are kind of tied together as companion applications that both require public hearing.
I have a motion on the items. Commissioner Braun.
I'm listening, move to refer to a public hearing.
Move to public hearing, both items. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Braun.
That would be for both A and B, um, named agenda.
Correct.
So I, I do have one question, though. Um. So normally, how many units would be required in ten percent of the total number?
In this case, an eighteen-year development would need two units.
And how, what's the size of that parcel? About like half an acre, quarter acre?
It's larger. I don't know off the top of my head, uh, but that, you'll, all of that detail will be.
Commissioner Ford?
Uh, nothing, Rick.
Hearings are required. Further comments? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Seven hands and an aye from Commissioner Levy, so passes unanimously. Sixty Catona Drive, special permit application of Catfield LLC for additions and alterations for the conversion of an existing office building, eighteen unit residential building, the design commercial district.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, sixty Catona Drive, um, there's a McDonald's on the corner, Blackrock Turnpike and Catona Drive. This is the next building in on Catona Drive adjacent to the McDonald's property. It's currently a two-story, um, professional office building. There's quite a bit of vacancy within the existing building. The ownership group is looking to convert the building with some additions, uh, to one hundred percent residential occupancy, requires a special permit and a public hearing.
Have a motion? Commissioner Ford? Move to public hearing. Second, Commissioner Braun? And further?
Just a quick question. Is this the eight dash thirty G application or is not? Okay.
Commissioner Braun, any questions, comments?
This would also require two units of affordable then, right?
It would, yes.
Any other further comments or questions or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Hands and an aye, uh, passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearing, zoning a rate, zoning regulation amendments, application of zoning. Section two point four of the zoning regulations, prohibited uses, two point four point one cannabis establishments. What?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, um, I'm just going to recap. You all know that in twenty twenty-one, uh, the state legislature passed an act that legalized that retail sale and other types of cannabis uses. Retail sales have been permitted since May of twenty twenty-two. That statute required the towns take an affirmative position as to whether cannabis uses are to be permitted and under what circumstances or prohibited. Doing nothing presumes that they're a permitted use. So, uh, this commission has adopted a prohibition, originally approved in February of twenty twenty-two. It was a one-year, um, prohibition of all cannabis uses, which was extended again, uh, last year. That prohibition is due to expire at the end of next month. The original act, um, required had a provision that capped the number, if you were to permit retail uses, had, had a cap by population of no more than, uh, one provider for, for every twenty-five thousand residents, uh, which would have capped retail sales at two retailers here in Fairfield. When we last discussed this, uh, it was the sense of the commission to move forward with an additional one-year, uh, extension. We have learned since then, uh, that kind of quietly, uh, in my opinion, the legislature in twenty twenty-two updated the act to eliminate that cap, that, uh, residential cap. So if cannabis uses or retailers were to be permitted, you couldn't have an outright cap in the zoning regulations. We can have a, uh, offset standards or, or like we do for stores, for example, that they can't be within a certain distance, uh, each other or, or other types of uses potentially, but you can't have an outright. So given that, what we think is substantial change in the statute, we've considered our recommendation now to eliminate the expiration date of the prohibition, keep it as a prohibited use, but, but eliminate the termination date, thereby making the prohibition indefinite. The couple of things to consider, if you choose to do that, uh, it does not foreclose the possibility of the town or this commission considering in the future to make it a permitted use, nor would it permit, uh, or prohibit, I'm sorry, any applicant from coming in for modification of the regulations. Hey, I've got a proposal I want to pitch. We think this could be a good use under these conditions. Uh, the fact that you have it as a prohibited use doesn't preclude any applicant from making a future application for you to consider it. Uh, also, I should note that considering a limited termination date of prohibition does, also does not preclude you from ultimately deciding, deciding that you just simply want to extend the prohibition an additional year. So we've published the notice of the hearing to consider the, uh, eliminating that date, thereby making the prohibition definite, but the option is yours, whether or not you want to do so, just make it a one-year prohibition. We did receive, um, fair number of emails that you have in your packet and I just, uh, some that we've seen before, but, uh, I just want to call your attention that we did reach out to the police department and there is an email from the police chief, um, concurring with the recommendation for the indefinite prohibition. Subject to questions, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, last we spoke, um, we had not known about the, uh, that cap amendment. Um, commission initially just wanted to do the one-year, extend the one-year prohibition. Um, consultation, it made sense now that the recommendation had been changed to broaden what we were going to do because we can always, as we know, with most applications, narrow scope of our decision. We just can't broaden it. So this was, gave us more flexibility doing frankly, whatever we decided to do tonight. So right now, the application is to, um, have the prohibition extended indefinitely. I concur with Mr. Went that that doesn't preclude anybody coming forward. In fact, we had done this prohibition, uh, for a year, kind of get a sense of what other towns and municipalities were going to do. Um, that kind of really hasn't come forward. So I mean, in respects, you know, that's, that's still an option for an applicant to come forward with their own regulation amendments, uh, for us to consider. So having said all that, uh, open it up to the commission for a motion on either extending it indefinitely or something.
Well, just, if, sorry, Mr. You did, we do need to allow if there are any members in the public that want.
Well, of course, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I apologize. I forgot this was a public hearing. I, I do apologize for that. So we will go, uh, said for the, any questions?
Unless you have any questions.
My apologies, I forgot. Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was going to make a motion, but, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot this is, um, lost my place. So. Do you have a question for Mr. Went or can I go to Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, you can go to Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. I just had a question for Mr. Went. Can you just talk about the distinction between medical marijuana and the retail marijuana?
Yes, the prior, yeah, prior to the twenty twenty-one act allowing recreational sale, uh, sale was, uh, um, limited to prescription, uh, medical marijuana, so-called. So there's a variety of different types of retailers. There's medical, there's hybrid, which are both medical and retail and then recreational and then strictly recreation. For example, Westport's had a, uh, medical dispensary for a number of years, but Westport chose not to broaden that allowance to allow recreational use. So Westport has a, a medical marijuana, only by prescription, uh, but no, they prohibit recreational. Bridgeport allows, uh, it's just to use our, uh, near Butters allows both of those. And there's a recreational dispensary just recently opened very close to the Fairfield border on Commerce Drive.
Uh, Commissioner Braun?
Are we, are we talking under a motion or are we just?
No, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. So I apologize for that.
Oh.
Mischaracterization. This is a.
Okay.
Public hearing. We are the applicant. Mr. Went is presenting.
So, um, just following up on that medical marijuana question. So if a pharmacy sold it, that'd be just, would it be considered a medical provider?
No, under, under the law, a pharmacy can't be also a medical dispensary. It has to be standalone, separately licensed.
Pharmacies can never sell it under this law.
Correct.
Wow, interesting.
Correct. It has to be an approved state medical marijuana dispensary or hybrid retailer that also allows for medical. You can't get your prescription for medical marijuana filled at Rite Aid or CVS or because it's, there's, because of the federal law and a lot of it is cash only, because even though the state permits it, it's still a violation of federal law. And so there's complications for banks that use credit cards and all that stuff for interstate trade. So it's essentially cash business.
Because I was thinking if we allowed it perhaps, but confined it to pharmacies, well, that can't fly with this. So, okay. So the only way you could have medical is a special dispensary that just does medical?
Correct.
And do we, oh, I had one more question. Um, do we have any results of positive or negative feedback from, I think Westport has of, is that a recreational?
Medical only.
Medical and how, where is that located or how?
The Post Road. Um, I haven't decided to observe it, but I'm not aware of any, um, negative consequences that have arisen from the medical dispensary, uh, but they chose not to pursue retail.
So you can confine it to medical or hybrid or retail, I suppose, but you can't confine it to the number. Or restrictions on distance from school, distance from a liquor store or something like that?
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Randolph?
So to clarify, if someone were to apply in the future, we could grant them at our discretion, if we could, we could maintain the prohibition, but if there was an applicant, we could grant a, a variance to the prohibition. Is that?
Well, a variance, go ahead. I'm sorry. It, it wouldn't be a variance, but just like any other application, we've seen lots of applications where someone is proposing something that isn't a square peg in a square hole and it requires some modification to the regulations to make that development project go forward. No different that if, even though it's, if you choose to make it a prohibited use, someone could apply to make it a permitted use under whatever metric they want to propose to you. Uh, and then if you thought that that was appropriate after a public hearing, you could judge about that.
And do we have any pending applications?
We do not, uh, because it's currently a prohibited use. I will tell you that I have had calls from providers that if it were to be a permitted use, I'm sure you would have applications, uh, to, to, to do so.
And, and what's generally the size of these stores, do we know? Can you just speak a little louder? What size, what size are the stores?
I, I don't know. I think they vary greatly.
Okay.
Um, depending on, on the location and whether they have other ancillary medical uses. There are other uses aside from sales such as cultivation or this, that, the other thing, but, but I, I don't know what the average size is.
And, and, um, are these stores, do they fit any sort of profile in Connecticut? Are they, uh, are they part of a franchise network? Are they independent operators? I mean.
There's a, I don't, I don't believe that they're franchise operators. There's a variance. It's a nearly a thousand-page bill that has very extensive criteria for how one can qualify as a retailer with substantial fees and so forth that go along with that. There's a metric for whether a certain percentage of those retailers meet the qualifications of serving a population that had a, uh, disparate impact from the war on drugs and all sorts of other things that, that make it a very complicated process. It complicated, I think, the rollout process with the state and why things have been a little slower, I think, in terms of gross sales they may have originally anticipated.
Thank you. Anything down there? I'm sorry, just couldn't tell.
No, that's fine.
Further questions for Mr. Went? Staff, we can always reach out to him. We'll go to public in a second. Anything else? If not, I'll go to public hearing, public comments. We can always ask questions of our staff. So, excuse me, that'll conclude the initial presentation from us, the applicants for this application. I'll open it up, the public comments. Does anybody in person wish to be heard? Yeah. Okay. Um, if you can just give me your name, if you can just say your name, please, your address and.
Pardon my presentation.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know protocol, so I, I apologize.
Well, let me ask, do you have, what, you have a presentation ready for us?
I think, no, just, uh.
Yeah. Well, fair enough. Right at.
Here for me if they're written.
No, no, please.
Uh, good evening and thank you, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kathy Haislett. I am the program director for the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition, and I am a Fairfield resident residing at seventeen Green Lawn Drive. As many of you know, the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition is the local prevention council for the town with a focus on youth substance use prevention and mental health wellness. In March twenty twenty-two, the community coalition submitted its advocacy statement to the commission opposing any commercial cannabis enterprise in Fairfield. Our advocacy statement included data and science-based research to support our position. As a youth substance use prevention coalition, a top concern for Fairfield Cares is to prevent youth from accessing marijuana, a drug that is detrimental to both youth's cognitive development and to their mental and physical well-being. For the past two years, the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition has very much appreciated the planning and zoning commission's moratorium to prohibit commercial cannabis in Fairfield. But as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the current prohibition expires, and now it is time to determine next steps. In preparation for this evening's meeting, the staff member to the commission offered three possible options for the commission to consider, including extending the prohibition further. I'd like to offer a fourth, simply to vote no to having marijuana retail stores and businesses in Fairfield. Take a definitive stand to keep our youth safe from a drug that can do irreputable harm. Question comes down to what kind of town do we want? Do we really want to make marijuana more accessible to our youth? What message would the approval of marijuana stores be to sending to youth and to their family? According to the DEA, the average marijuana product has a THC content of fifteen to twenty percent, five times the amount of THC that was in marijuana when you were a teen. In addition, marijuana concentrates, look up to sixty percent THC, are also legal to sell in the state of Connecticut. These THC concentrates are often used in vape cartridges or used for dabbing, inhale and even higher THC content. There is actually a concentrate called Diamond that is ninety-nine point nine percent THC. While Diamond is not legal to sell, a Fairfield store would include concentrates and marijuana edibles and beverages among other THC-based products. Do we really want these products available in our town? Yes, we have alcohol package stores, but alcohol is a very different drug from marijuana. Marijuana stays in the body significantly longer, impacts the brain's ability to learn, affects judgment and coordination, and continued use can cause depression, anxiety, cannabis use disorder, hallucinations, schizophrenia, other psychotic episodes. In short, why would we want to make such a poison more accessible to our youth? For those adults twenty-one and older who use marijuana, it is available just a few miles away on Commerce Drive in Bridgeport. Let's keep marijuana stores out of Fairfield. Let's continue to have a community that supports healthy living for all of its residents. Let's give our kids every opportunity to grow and develop into healthy adults. When we vote on this issue in February, let's vote no to the presence of marijuana stores in Fairfield. Thank you.
Two quick questions for you. I assume you're, you're not just individually, but on behalf of Cares. You mentioned an advocacy petition. Did you submit that again for this?
Um, it was actually included, I saw, in Tom Hennessy's, um, email to you all, and I think I.
I want to make sure it's part of the record.
Yeah, I think I resubmitted, so you do have that, yes.
Do, yes, we do have it. Okay. I just want to make sure we have it for the record.
Commissioner Randolph? Oh, just one question or clarification. Uh, thank you for your statement. And in your statement, you, what distance did you say the other dispensary was in Fairfield? Because I think it is contiguous.
It's within a hundred yards.
But just for the clarification for the record is a hundred yards approximately. Yes.
Two thousand Commerce Drive.
Yes, no, I know, exactly. Drive past there, so. But I just want to clarify that it is not a couple of miles, it's a hundred yards.
Right, depending upon where you live in Fairfield.
But from the border.
From the border, yes.
Commissioner Braun?
The one that's on Commerce Drive, does that sell recreation or medical or both? And this might not be for you, it might be for Jim, but, um, does the law allow us to put either age restrictions or concentration restrictions on the sale of retail marijuana, cannabis?
Same.
We're not allowed to put those kind of restrictions on it?
We can't.
Oh, we are. It's twenty-one.
State, whatever the state.
He said twenty. Okay. So given that, what's, with your experience, um, it still would get out to children or youth, people under twenty-one, the same way it does with liquor stores? Okay, thank you.
Good question for Mr. Went.
Well, let's, oh, I'm sorry, just make sure, is there any further questions with, for the public here? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Let me just see if there's anybody else. That's okay, because I'm guessing there may not be. Any other member of the public that's present wish to be heard on this application? See, nobody. I'll turn, I don't, I don't see anybody else that's here virtually, but I'll make, because anybody who's joining us virtually wish to be heard on this matter, if you're calling in, please press star six, unmute yourself. For the public in person or joining us remotely or by phone wish to be heard on this application? Uh, we have somebody. NT? Joining us remotely, NT?
Yeah, how are you?
Yeah, how are you, commission? My name's Nick Tamborino. I'm one of the, I'm the owner at Blue Point Wellness of Westport. We're a medical dispensary facility. I'm a resident in the town of Fairfield. And, you know, I heard the comment from the lady before, and I just wanted to clarify, there are potency restrictions on retail recreational marijuana that the state has, you know, rolled out through their program. You know, there is a cap, so you would not be able to buy concentrates like the previous woman mentioned in an adult-use store. There are not medic, potency restrictions on the medical side. Patients that have a medical card are allowed to purchase higher potency products. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public wish to be heard in this application? Nobody here in person, so again remotely or by phone, does anybody wish to be heard on this application? Joining us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Hearing nothing, I'll close the public comment portion of this. Commissioner Harrison, you have a question?
Some point of order. And apologies, I just don't know the answer. Are we anticipating closing the public hearing tonight? Because some people may not be aware that we were discussing this. I don't know if it was widely publicized, so maybe they hear about it afterward and maybe too late for them to offer commentary, therefore are against, so. We'd want to consider leaving it open.
What's our deadline, what's the deadline?
Well, the, our current prohibition expires at the end of February. So we'd have to act for then. There are two meetings presuming weather permits, and we don't need to cancel anything. We could dispose of it remotely. We have two meetings in February, so.
I know.
Yeah, we did get, again, that's completely.
No, that's fine. I just want to double check. I mean, my thought.
We did get a number of emails about it.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we have emails. It's been noticed like anything else. I mean, my thought is to move forward and end the public comment. If there's a massive issue, then we can address it later, but. Commissioner Randolph?
A similar clarifying question. So, Mr. Went has provided us with, I think, twenty-three pages of comments. Did we receive any other comments? I think I know the answer, I just want to.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Kathy. So we've received twenty-three pages of comments, and I just want to confirm that there are no other comments that were received. And all, all of those comments had a single point of view. I just want to make sure that. Well, there was, just, just for the record, there was one that I sent late today that was a supporter. But if, if, if there were two, two late emails that I sent this afternoon, but presuming that things come in since five o'clock, you have everything that I've received since.
If something comes in even tomorrow or the next day, that's only forwarded on to us anyway, so.
I sent late this afternoon, one, two additional emails, one from a local pastor and one from a resident that was in favor. Of allowing. In terms of, just to, again, clarify, Commissioner Harrison's questions, we have provided proper notice this meeting that this topic is on here, and people have had ample opportunity to provide comments.
I mean, we provided notice in the due course, and, you know, we've done everything as in the due course, and they're normal. I don't, unless, unless Mr. Went tells me otherwise.
I just, I just really want to restate this.
No, that's fine, yeah, I mean, it's in the note, everything, all the notices are part of the public record, so I'm not too concerned about that. Further questions? It's technically rebuttal, but assuming Mr. Went doesn't want to rebut.
I have nothing further, Commissioner.
All right. Hearing not, seeing no other questions from our commission, I'll close the public hearing on this application. Move on to eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike special permits and coastal site plan applications. Determination that the property qualify as a transit-oriented development park application, residential pertaining to a two-hundred-and-forty-five-unit residential development, commercial excuse, in the what, design industrial district, commercial? DR is what? Design rep, design districts at the end. What's DR stand for?
I'm sorry, this is, it's, it's DID with the Commerce Drive Design District.
Thank you, Commerce Drive, okay. Attorney Fallon. Oh, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. The commission, good evening. For the record, my name's John Fallon. I'm very pleased to be here. Let me explain the little Christmas presents. We're going to offer, you obviously have the entire submission that we have made. We have culled from that primarily some slides that we will be presenting tonight, our various presenters who I'll introduce shortly. We just thought as a matter of convenience for the commission, we give you in the order of the slides that you're going to see tonight. Both that might help you a little bit visually and also in your deliberations down the road. So that's what we've just handed out, and we will go through those one by one. And don't look ahead now, because there's a lot of surprises here.
As you said, the slides that you're giving us now are already part of the record?
Oh, yes, yes, and they will be displayed tonight.
That's fine. Can you also send, submit these slides?
They have been. That's how Emily Lane has. So I felt like the teacher in the third grade saying, don't look ahead, pay attention. So anyway, but thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. You always say you're excited about an application, but this is an application we, meaning the team I'm going to introduce you to shortly, are really excited about. We've been working on this development for, I guess, over two years from start to finish. You've seen it before in the context of amendments, which we'll talk about tonight. But I, I'm, I say, I use the word excited because we're excited to present to you tonight a proposal that we think is going to create a very vibrant mixed-use community on an extremely important gateway property in the TOD. We're excited because the proposal is made, as you'll hear in a minute, by a preeminent local development group with strong personal and business roots in Fairfield, and perhaps most importantly, a proven track record in our community with regard to exceptional development, doing what they say they're going to do and doing it in a manner that makes the town, I think, very proud. We're excited also about it because, you know, we've survived the pandemic. We've come to this point, and I think this particular development at this particular location will be a real beacon of Fairfield's continued recovery and economic resurgence, and will help ensure again the continued success and vitality of the TOD. We're excited about it too, because as we talked to you about with regard to the amendments that you approved back in March, what this development does, as the amendments did, is basically achieve the goals of the TOD studies that you work so hard on as a commission. So ultimately, our goal here, what we present to you tonight with a lot of pride and enthusiasm, is to create a vibrant mixed-use community on this property that will address current market demands for housing and with sensitivity and consideration to the current work-at-home and remote options that have become very much a way of life for us. So just a few housekeeping matters, if you will. I did mention the amendments. We did bring before you, and you approved on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, a series of amendments. These amendments were, as we told you at the time, essential and vital in order to make our vision for this development feasible and possible, and hopefully a reality. You approved all those amendments, and so we are now here with those amendments in place to present the detailed plans. We have, as part of this application, sought approval of a special permit, your site plan approval, and there's also a CAM application here. With regard to the CAM application, you do have the affirmative report from the DEEP, which I believe was received Friday of last week. And you also have Ms. Harrigan's staff report of January nineteen, also affirmative with regard to meeting the standards that are applicable here from the CAM perspective. So that's what we have for you tonight. And before we go any further, I, I speak of the developer here and the unique position that they bring in terms of being residents of the town, lifelong, longtime residents. And in that regard, to talk a little bit about their vision and their track record, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Montelli.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Thank you, Chair Noonan, fellow commissioners, for having Post Road Residential back to discuss our project at eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, a two-hundred-and-forty-five-unit mixed-use transit-oriented, transit-oriented development within the Fairfield Metro District. We're thrilled to have the opportunity to develop a transformative project that redevelops an underutilized brownfield site, brings significant net fiscal benefits to the town, connects the fabric of a cohesive mixed-use district. My name is Tom Montelli, and I'm a partner at Post Road Residential. Joining me this evening from Post Road Residential is Andrew Montelli and Katie Clark. Also here are members from our architectural and engineering teams, including Bindfield Architecture, our project architect, Land Tech, our project engineer, Eric Rains Landscape Architecture, our project landscape architect, SLR Engineers, our project traffic engineers, and Jay Soltis, the project's licensed environmental professional. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the work this commission has done for our community. Through an important planning initiatives like the TOD development, TOD study, long-range planning efforts like the Plan of Conservation Development, this commission has provided a vision for the planning and development of our community. Without this clear vision, the development community wouldn't be able to react thoughtfully and with conviction. That's especially important because the commercial real estate market is experiencing tremendous turbulence at this time. It's in times like these when a clear vision and planning guardrails are most important for the private sector. From the time we flew down to Florida in twenty twenty-two to meet the owner of eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, to make a deal, to now, our commitment to developing this site has not wavered. Despite the financial headwinds affecting our market, Post Road believes that Fairfield is the greatest community in Connecticut with tremendous growth prospects in the future. Without this commission's commitment on providing a clear vision, I don't know if Post Road would be standing here today, so thank you. Post Road is a privately-owned entrepreneurial development company based in Fairfield. For over two decades, our offices have been located on Uncoa Road above the Sacred Heart Community Theater. Most Post Road partners have lived in Fairfield for many years. We care about our community, we participate in it, we contribute back in various ways. We're a small, hands-on company with seven employees, but we like to dream big. Our financial partners are the most sophisticated and largest real estate investors in the world. We invest our own money alongside them in our projects. There currently isn't a project we're developing that doesn't have a repeat investment partner, which makes us feel good because it confirms we continue to do business the right way. My father, Andrew Montelli, started Post Road Residential thirteen years ago after working his entire career at large national development firms. The business model for those types of firms are centered around production, volume, and repetition. Now, achieving scale and operational efficiencies aren't bad business goals. There just is an underlying problem with it related to developing multifamily mixed-use communities. That problem is that creativity, neatness, and thoughtful placemaking get sacrificed in the name of production. This is why Post Road Residential was created. We've learned that our customers appreciate living in a unique community that was thoughtfully curated. Therefore, we focus on the details, the importance of marketing and branding, the customer-first architectural design approach. Our goal is to create vibrant communities through meaningful design, and our mindset is that our business model of quality over quantity is a better approach overall. Eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike represents the tenth project Post Road and Bindfield Architecture will work on together. Across the industry, Bindfield is known as a preeminent designer of unique spaces that creates memorable experiences. Their work in one of our latest Massachusetts projects named the Pioneer was awarded the prestigious Connecticut AIA Interior Design Award for Excellence. And our last Connecticut project, named the Anchorage, located at the former Knights of Columbus building on Uncoa Road, is another great example of the high level of design we plan to deliver at eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike. It's a very unique opportunity to have a large development proposal like this in Fairfield when the same applicant has already developed a town. One way to vet Post Road is to experience, and to experience how a vision comes to life, would be to see our past work. Therefore, I'd like to personally extend an invitation to all the commissioners for a tour at your convenience of the Anchorage. An integral component of the vision that we have for eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike stems from the commission's adopted Goody Glancy Study. Initially, the study identifies the purpose, ties that into development visions, and then explains the benefits of those visions. For example, the study discusses the vision of Fairfield Metro as one of comprehensive development to create a thriving, a thriving revenue-generating district. The vision for downtown was one of thoughtful, context-specific development to strengthen an existing design fabric. Our vision for eighty-one incorporates both, bringing forward important quantitative and qualitative benefits to the town. The Fairfield Metro area is on the way to becoming a vibrant mixed-use district. The exciting design aspect of our opportunity is that eighty-one represents the missing link that will solidify a cohesive ecosystem or district. Our vision for the project is to become an integral piece of the fabric, connecting the district, encouraging connectivity throughout it, and to create synergistic uses that sustainably activate the district. These important qualitative design and planning benefits will be augmented by two important quantitative benefits. First, we'll contribute a large sum towards the WPCA Inflow and Infiltration Fund, which will help the town address a large issue impacting critical infrastructure. As simple as it sounds, fixing leaks and cracks in century-old sewer pipes is critically important for pursuing sustainable growth, seeing that roughly half of the capacity in our pipes is currently being taken up by INI. The second important quantitative benefit is that once eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike is fully occupied, annual property taxes paid to the town of Fairfield will increase by nearly twenty times what is being paid now as the property will become one of the top ten highest property taxpayers in town. In addition to designing the project thoughtfully around the context of the larger district, Post Road will incorporate the history of the site into the story of the community. As it stands, as it stands, the name of our project will be The Bullard, which pays homage to Bullard Machine Tool Works founder Edward Bullard. Over a hundred years ago, the Fairfield Metro area was a single thirty-acre campus home to Bullard's innovative machining and industrial campus. That history will continue to live on through contextual architecture and purpose-based branding in our community. On behalf of Post Road, we want to thank this commission for the opportunity to bring these visions to life for our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom. The package that we gave you also has some photographs of the, some of the other developments, including Anchorage, which I think speak to the issue or the question of the commitment that Post Road brings in terms of quality of design and quality of life for its tenants. There you'll see those, and you'll have those to peruse. So let's get into the nuts and bolts of this exciting proposal. And to start us off, I'm going to ask Mr. Peter Romano of Land Tech to walk you through the existing conditions and our proposed site plan, and he'll cover in that regard the aspects of site engineering relative to the project. Peter?
Good evening, commissioners. I am Pete Romano. I'm the principal of Land Tech. We are a site civil and environmental firm in Westport, Connecticut. We have quite a history on the street here. We are the site civil engineers at the metro center, whether that's good or bad. And we just provided engineering on the illicit brewery next door to us. And it's an unenviable situation to be in after Tom just gave a very, very well-done presentation. But I'll tell you, our, what we, part of the project is probably the most boring part of it, so I'll be brief, so you can hear all the cool stuff that's going to happen on this piece of property. But we were part of the layout of the project. The project's just a little bit less than five acres. Part of there, Black Rock and Ash Creek. Our part of the project was working with a landscape architect and architect, but essentially we helped Tom make his way through the WPCA, came up with the calculations that allowed the sanitary sewer connections, and then we provided all the utilities designed for the property, and particularly the storm drainage, which I want to talk just a little bit about. This is a little bit different site than a lot of the sites you've. This is a little bit different site than a lot of the sites you've seen in Fairfield. And I say that because there's a little bit back and forth with the engineering department regarding our design. When you're in close proximity to the river, basically, at the lowest end of the watershed, our design consists of water quality. So, we collect all the water on this piece of property. Tom alluded to the fact this is a contaminated brownfield site. So, a lot of the low-impact development elements that are sometimes able to be implemented into a project were very challenged to use those here. Couldn't use the typical rain garden, couldn't excavate into the soil, couldn't put the typical infiltrators, which you've all seen, those eagle-shaped black plastic structures. So, in this particular instance, we treated it as water quality. And water quality in the state of Connecticut is you basically contain or treat the first one-inch flush of rainfall. That's what we did in this particular project. It's been collected. You know the site. It's been by it thousands of times. The site is nearly completely impervious right now. There's remnants of an old concrete slab there. When we develop a piece of property, there'll obviously be pavement for parking. The building is what they call a podium building, and ceiling from Bindfield is fairly a little bit more, but there'll be parking underneath it, there'll be parking around it. We collected the water, put it into this hydrodynamic storm scepter, treats the water, and discharges it to Ash Creek. In our storm water management plan, you'll see that typically on this size site of five acres, you're required to... I'm getting into this specifics that you probably don't need to know, but I go into a little bit. You need to treat for this particular site four CFS, cubic feet per second, of water. In our instance, what we designed here, we're actually treating twenty-five cubic feet of water, which means we've got almost nearly six times what's required for the treatment. And that's the way we treated the piece of property here. The other consideration that the engineering had asked us to do was look into how much rainfall fell on the site and ran off in the existing conditions and then what happened in the proposed conditions. And that's not really the basis for this design. As I told you, this design is strictly water quality. However, maybe some of you got an email about this. I know Jim did. Probably four o'clock this afternoon, we did this calculation that the engineering department asked us to do, and it came up. In other words, there's no increase of flow in the proposed conditions. We're one tiny piece of property in a massive watershed at the lowest end of the water. So, the concept is here is to simply treat that water and get it discharged into Ash Creek before any of the peak flows come down from above in the watershed. That's how this particular site, and quite frankly, it's how we treated Metro Center next door. It's how we treated Land Rover around the corner. It's a practice that's used in Fairfield. And that's essentially for me. I think that I'm happy to answer any questions, but I...
Thank you, Peter.
Just all my work on engineer, sign off on this?
Yes, I'm going to elaborate on that. And the answer is yes, based upon documentation that Mr. Went received right a few minutes ago, I think. But we had our code enforcement review on this development on August twenty-ninth. We did have received, we did outreach during the course of that period before and after the code with the town engineering office. We did receive an email from Ms. Jane yesterday, and she had four questions. One was the existing and proposed peak runoff and volume calculations for up to the twenty-five-year storm event, and wanted to know more about that. When we got her email yesterday morning, we had a series of phone conferences with Mr. Romano and his colleagues, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Jane. Mr. Went was involved in some of those, and we appreciate all of their time because we were able to address the issues. What was requested with regard to the first point that she made was that we would provide a chart, if you will, a summary showing what the pre- and post-flow runoffs were for the two, five, twenty-five, and hundred-year storms. And although that was a request we really received today, we were able to do that. That has been submitted to you, to your record. Mr. Went has all of that, the technical calculations. Most importantly, Mr. Went has an email which was received by him, and I was copying on it as well after the meeting began, from Ms. Jane, who was good enough to review these calculations after hours. And her email, which I won't reach to you, speaks to her finding that it's accurate and that the engineering department was satisfied with that. They had a second question with regard to soil percolation rates, but in reviewing the report, they confirmed today at a meeting that Mr. Went attended and that it was a phone conference, that they were satisfied with regard to that. One of their other, their second to final points was, you know, what had been utilized in terms of low-impact features that we employed in our design. Mr. Romano addressed that to you and to them. That's what he just talked about now in terms of the uniqueness of the site. And then the last item that was referenced and a question was referenced was the... Yeah, was the question with regard to issues and what have you pertaining to the contaminated site. And, you know, let me just make very, very clear for the record, if I can. Hang on just one second here. I want to just find my proper notes.
Do we have all this confirmation from?
I'm going to just, Mr. Chairman, I have copies. This is an email. On the backside of this, there is the four issues that Mr. Fallon is referring to, an initial response from Mr. Romano that's in red. What ensued from that, as Mr. Fallon just indicated, was a series of conversations and is early as my phone buzzed while we were earlier presenting the cannabis thing. And I do have a text from Mr. Hurley. I spoke to him briefly. We could follow up with confirmation emails.
That's fine.
Just so you have it and understand the questions that were raised on the backside of this, I'm going to pass these down. The initial four questions, that is my understanding now, have been resolved to the engineering department's satisfaction.
And this was generally material. We did, I just want to make it clear that, and this is not critically of the engineering department in any way, but we did submit this application in September, and this...
I understand.
Drainage reporting, but these questions arose yesterday, and so we dealt with them. The last question, I covered three of the four, was with regard to the fact that this site is a brownfield site. So, let me just make clear for the record that in regard to the soil contamination on site, the project will unequivocally achieve regulatory closure pursuant to the Connecticut DEP standards and requirements. There's no other option if this site is to be redeveloped into a mixed-use, multifamily development. Furthermore, traditional financing for a project of this scale is unobtainable without achieving regulatory closure with DEP. And Mr. Soltis, who's our DEP, who's our environmental consultant, will be responsible for that effort, and his experience is well-established in this state. Therefore, the applicant, we're prepared for this, and we will begin the process once the project is approved and we purchase the land, so that, you know, we are very much aware of the obligations with regard to the contaminated site, and we will address those issues in accordance with all Connecticut standards.
No, appreciate, we appreciate your expeditious responses. I mean, I understand the timelines. Crunch tape what you do, but I'm glad you were able to clear that up for us.
And I appreciate Mr. Went's efforts in that regard, Mr. Hurley's efforts, and Ms. Jane's reviewing this apparently, as I said, so she could respond to Mr. Went at about seven o'clock this evening.
Oh, that's good.
We appreciate that.
We're done and... Thank you, Mr....
I think I saw you had a question.
So, I couldn't find the code review. I like how you separated everything into separate files. There's thirteen files that are up on the website, the town website, but I couldn't find code review or the wetlands permit or the WPCA. Is it possible to get those to us?
Yes.
Permit in this? I thought I saw it was for inland wetlands.
There's no inland wetlands permit. There was a code review on August twenty-ninth, and that should be part of your record. And there was WPCA approval, which I should mention, that was approved last Wednesday. We could go tomorrow. So, we have WSP, and that is part of your, that will be part of your record.
We'll double check. Either it's part of the record now, or it's a part and distributed to us. So, forty-four minutes and WPCA, we'll just double check and see.
And as far as wetlands, I know Metro Center had wetlands when they remediated that. And I thought I read somewhere that there was inland wetlands regulated here. None. Did the conservation department write to you to confirm that?
Yeah, I think you'll find that in the code minutes to start with.
Mr. Chairman, I can read it to the rec. If the code minutes are not one of the items in that folder, that is...
I didn't see them. I tried to look through everything. I might not...
I'm not suggesting they are, but if they're not there, that's on us. We could certainly forward that, but Sarah Neefsee from Conservation, her comment in code meetings is eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike does not contain any wetlands, watercourses, or upland review area. Development as property will not require a wetlands permit.
Okay. So, it's only tidally wetlands influenced, and that... Does that combine with the DEP remediation project to have DEP oversight? Or is that just something?
Separate. It's two separate things. As a matter of fact, this particular piece of property we got was called the UMA.
Could you speak a little?
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I'm close to you.
And then this particular piece of property, we talked about flood zone and stuff, we actually received approval for a lump, which is line of map amendment.
Is that female?
It's female, correct.
That's separate from CAM and from...
Correct. Flood zone is actually a natural coastal resource. Our CAM report, there's no negative impact from this development on any of the coastal resources. Flood zone is one of the coastal resources, and there's no impact to the coastal resource, the flood zone here in our particular case.
Your record will also include, I'm sure it already does, this came in Friday to Ms. Harrigan from the DEP, and this is their comment checklist on our CAM application, and it confirms there's no adverse impact, as does Ms. Harrigan's staff report. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Any further questions?
All of these consultants will remain in attendance throughout.
I know, but we're thinking about it.
Couple other questions while we're thinking. It might not be for you, but remediation of the Metro Center site, they chose a cap instead of what we did on the X-site, which you might be familiar with, which is get rid of all the contamination. What is the difference, and how is that decision-making made, that we're going to cap and leave the contamination there versus get rid of it all?
I'm going to, I know a little bit about it.
It might be, that's fine.
I know a little bit.
He's going to...
Jump the gun here.
You can have him.
Hold on, we don't have to, we don't have to go out of order. Just keep that in mind and...
We'll be able to answer that.
I'm working on the Metro Center, but he's in the room. He might as well respond. Okay.
We'll hold that and continue.
That's fine. Keep your tone with your presentation.
Yeah, we'll keep it for the presentation. Okay. That now bring us to Mr. Sealan Paythorne from Bindfield. I'm clearing out because Goddard is also accompanying you, Kim.
Sealan Pathoff. Good evening. My name is Sealan Pathoff. I'm a principal at Bindfield Architecture. I'm joined by my associate Brian Goddard. So, I think we want to go, John wants to go efficient and quickly. So, Brian will point, I'll go through the text, and we'll be looking at that screen.
Which screen is everybody looking at? I can flash for whatever.
And you have these... I'm going to the TV, so we'll go there.
Yeah, okay.
If you're going to use a flash, you're going to have to do it on that one, yeah. The other ones won't accept. Well, we'll display it.
If you guys don't mind, we'll use that one.
Use that one.
The other section that says...
Is that something that's in our package?
It's all in your package. It starts with architecture.
Section that starts with architecture.
The term where it starts with architecture.
Can you expand a little bit that, Ms. Harrigan, please? As you can.
Give me more sheets.
It's in here as well.
Mine, it doesn't show the entire slide.
Why you put views on it?
Oh, I gotcha. It's going in the wrong direction. What page is it?
It's this guy here. After that one.
Let me know. I was looking for the placement of the flash. Okay?
Including the cover, this is the eleventh page of the handle.
Go ahead.
So, I'd like to start with some existing context. The image, this image shows the site. It's proximity to the train station, the connection to Fairfield, this direction, Black Rock Turnpike, and on Ash Creek. And then the connection into Bridgeport in this direction across the bridge. So, truly a TOD help. The images below, starting from left to right, and I know it's small, but you have images there. Again, just context, everyone knows it, but it's a fairly open site. Right now, the first image is looking across the waste portion of Ash Creek, across the parking lot towards our site. We make our way down the road, looking into the parking lot. Further down, you're at bottom of the creek, looking up at our site. That's important because that's what we're developing. And then the last two images taken from Black Rock. One very important across the bridge to our site, and one from Black Rock Turnpike looking across in front of illicit towards our site. Next one, please. So, when we started to look at the site and think about the product and the project we wanted to develop, we looked at your TOD study by Goody Clancy and its design goals. Those goals reinforced by initial meeting with staff. In short, TOD study tends to create a sense of place around the train station. With that as a mission statement of sorts, we extracted four primary architectural results. We want us to add activity and lifelong Ash Creek Boulevard, create architecture that represents an urban living scale along Black Rock Turnpike, create spaces for public use and give people a reason to come to this area, this place, this site, and create architecture that is engaging enough to anchor this corner and be the first view coming over the bridge into Fairfield. We use the goals from the study as a guide. So, just for example, the images here show intent, two images below. So, that's directly from your TOD study, two thousand and eighteen, I think it was. But you can't achieve what they've shown there with a building on the corner because we have easements, the property isn't deep enough at that point. So, we go, we understood was the intent of what they were trying to create, which was a presence on the corner. And we think our building does that. So, before we go to that, now building, I just want to touch on the architectural vernacular. So, the area has a... The area has a history of manufacturing. Of particular note was, as Tom mentioned, was a factory for the Bullard Company that existed in the area. Research tells us the company was a leader in manufacturing, especially during World War I and II. They developed machine parts that helped enable mass production. I only bring this up because in our work at Post Road Residential and our realized projects to date, we have found that finding a compelling and relevant story to tell is important. The story that then permeates to the exterior architecture, building, landscape, and all the interiors. We found that having this story results in a more engaging project and a more engaged user. So, we took clues from this factory vernacular that you see on the left-hand side to influence our architectural choices, and we came up with this. So, this is a view from the corner of Ash Creek, Black Rock Turnpike. The building will be the prominent structure in view as you come across the bridge into Fairfield. Along with illicit brewery, it will also add definition to the Ash Creek and Black Rock Turnpike intersection. Few architectural notes here. Brian, if you can point them out if you don't mind. The architecture draws its inspiration from the factory aesthetic, large windows used to create patterning across the facades. That factory vernacular is simplified and slightly abstracted. There's a strong architectural element that grounds the corner, building name, as Tom pointed out. The building is modulated with recesses and changes in plane to control the mass. Primary exterior materials are brick veneer and fiber cement panels with steel accents. See them on your package, I assume, but there are steel accents at the balconies, at the windows. We've hinted at the brick details at the top right of the... at the top right of the image. But we will pay attention to the detail. We'll pay attention to brick detail, corners of the fiber cement, detailing around the windows and the balconies. Because with this abstracted vernacular, simplified approach to architecture, the details are important. Well, we've done that before and we tried, hopefully I did it. Uh, what is also captured in this image is curated and hopefully park-like frontage to the building. Our landscape architect Eric Grains will go over this in detail. But the overall idea was to have Ash, the Ash Creek frontage be as permeable and as engaging as possible. Uh, next slide, please. This is the view from the southwest side, standing at the edge of Ash Creek Boulevard, some salient architectural points here. You see the modulation of the facade again to control the massing. The left three bays of architecture will be the backdrop to the public court. To that point, Eric will describe that to the left of this image, there's a parking court that can and will be programmed for occasional public events. Those three elements form the backdrop to it. Um, you see the curated landscape foreground with continuous sidewalk again. At the first floor, we have expansive glazing to make those spaces appear again as permeable as possible.
Um, where, where are the public events? Where we're getting asked?
To the left of that, better shown in plan and Eric Grains' landscape architect will go over that in detail. But in plan, if you saw the plan, there's a public court. Oh, there's a court to the left of that. Oh, we have next slide.
We have, yeah, the site plan will show.
Oh, sorry.
Right, Emily. Yeah, we should cut. So this is the overall plan. And Eric will go through our conscious effort to connectivity in our site planning. But I want to reiterate the important architectural construction that we as an office had. But I just point those out. Um, looking in plan, but extrapolating the ideas that we felt were important. The facade that fronts Black Rock Turnpike and the corner that is the view coming over the bridge, you've seen that. The creation of, of an engaging public foreground, but hopefully dramatic, this dramatic facade as its backdrop. Eric will show you the foreground. You've seen the backdrop. Um, and the creation of public space and the connectivity from that space to the train station. It's, can't be understated that that's what this area needs and this what this project provides. So with that, I'd like to, uh, read you the following data for the record. There are 245 residential units. Uh, of those, nine percent, nine percent of studios, 50% of one bedrooms, 38% of two bedrooms and 4% of three bedrooms. 12% of the units are deemed affordable, so 30 units. These are distributed evenly through the project. There are 313 parking spaces, 245 covered in the garage and 68 uncovered. Eight EV spaces for, for the front of the site and for the rear of the site. Maybe, can you, sorry, Emily, can we go back one?
Could you repeat that about eight what spaces?
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll, I'll repeat that. There are eight EV spaces, uh, charging stations, electric charging stations for, for cars. Uh, four at the front of the site and four at the rear of the site. Uh, that represents 2.5% of the parking spaces provided. There will be infrastructure in place day one to increase that number to 10% as required later on in the life of the project. There's approximately 15,000 square foot of internal residential amenity space of two floors. There's 6,000 square foot of public cowork type space at the first floor. There are two elevated residential amenity courtyards totaling approximately 21,000 square feet. Show you that in the next slide. Two slides in the up. Uh, there's approximately 5,000 square foot of roof deck amenity, so a highly amenitized building. There are 357 bedrooms total, 367 is allowed. That goes to your allowed density. There's a 49% of building coverage with 80% is allowed. There's 75 bicycle storage spaces. Finally, the building is five stories and 58.7 foot high as calculated from average grade with five stories and 70 foot is allowed.
Question for you. All those, all that detail somewhere summarized in this?
In the back of the package.
Yes, it's in a, it's in a cover auto sheet.
Got it.
At the back of the package and the sheet. A lot of numbers.
Oh, thank you.
About the height, so the, the building is 57 feet tall?
58.7 as calculated from average grade.
And, um, ground floor is 15 feet tall then?
The gr, the height of the ceiling on the, at the first floor, it's, it's about that, yes.
Is that retail? Is that for retail?
Well, if you, maybe, we should go to the next one. I'll show exactly that. That's the first floor.
I don't even know the title.
No, right, there's good, I think. Uh, we can go to the section if we need to. Uh, the blue area is amenity and leasing lobby. That's where the end, I'll go to that in a second. And the, the, well, the pink, pink area, right? The pink area is a, a retail type space currently intended as cowork. So that frontage is your retail slash public face of the building. There's a step in the building between the colored area and the gray area of about five foot, which results in a higher ceiling. Direct answer to your question, about 15 foot in that lower space of the first floor. So the pink and the, um, blue areas about five foot, you can see the height and they front of the Ash Creek.
Amenity is amenity for the building, uh, for the occupants.
Correct.
Cowork, if that's.
Public.
Public, retail. Retail. So it's going to be leased out to.
An operator.
One question about, so the parking here is at grade then? That's all in the rest, underneath the rest of the building or is that below grade?
At grade, at grade below the building.
So the outside details make it kind of look like there's something there that's not parking, right?
No, I, so, sorry, I should, I should, full statement is 245 spaces are adequate below the building and there's additional spaces uncovered around. It's providing surface additional parking.
But the, uh, then that's behind the building, not on the road. That's like behind the.
This, well, Emily, do you mind going back one? I apologize.
Oh, I see. At the end by illicit.
Can you point this out? So there's the surface parking, the light gray is the covered parking. Brian's pointing to surface parking in front of the building, parallel spaces to the back of the building, spaces along the train tracks uncovered.
Isn't that part of illicit behind the buil, okay. Train tracks.
Directly behind the light gray is not illicit. Directly in front of illicit's, uh, sign on that particular plan is illicit's parking.
With your highlighter, why don't you put, uh, show the boundary line between your project? Up and down once or twice. See it?
So it's worth saying, um, that as, as we're pointing that out, uh, it may have come up and Tom might go over it, but part of illicit's parking is on our, our property and, um, developer, also residential has allowed the use of about 15 foot of our property by illicit to improve their ability to park and make a place on their side.
Which part is that?
Right on that edge.
That's actually your parking?
It's not, it's our property.
Your property.
Tom's property.
It's, okay, your property, but their parking.
On that edge. Yes.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I had a question. This slide would be best directed to Attorney Fallon. Do you guys have an operator for this retail space or for the, um, coworking space?
I'll let Mr. Montelli.
I'm just curious because I have every trends, you know, we work is like filing bankruptcy. I'm just curious what, what if you don't get one? Maybe you do have one.
So, um, I guess first I'll answer the question by like the vision, why cowork and then two operator. So when we've surveyed our customers in our building, found that nearly 40% of them work at home in some capacity, which makes sense with the proliferation of, you know, independent contractors, entrepreneurs at home, et cetera. So we started thinking to ourselves, we're spending all this time designing spaces for people to live. Why, why not figure out how to incorporate a place for them to work within our building? And there's synergies between the two. So that's where we came up with the general idea of starting to develop some space within our buildings that could be available to the greater community for working. Um, we've explored options of operating it ourselves through the institutional management company that does our day-to-day leasing. Those companies are gray stars of the world, bazudos. We could operate it or we would lease it out to small independent operators, not like the WeWorks of the world, but that are in Darien and Westport and New Haven that operate sort of small six to 12,000 foot spaces much more efficiently than the WeWorks of the world. The WeWorks of the world were in the news because of their flawed business model, um, which just generally speaking is not a concern with these smaller operators. So to answer your question, we haven't decided yet who the operator is going to be. But we have a strong vision of why we want to do it and why we think it's going to be successful.
I appreciate that. I understand the why. I'm just curious if you have to.
Yeah, we, we've talked to the three different operators and in addition to talking with those three operators, we're thinking about doing it ourselves or doing it in-house.
Or it's you.
Yes. Well, I would, yeah. It's the fourth option. I don't know if it's the worst option, but.
I see you're confident that there's a demand for this. I, I.
100% confident, yeah.
I've seen a lot of companies demanding people go back to work full-time. I know. So I'm just curious. Sorry. Thank you.
Well, yeah, so three, three side plane questions. Um, on the top part by illicit brewery, is that a second means of egress from the parking lot?
Yeah, that's it.
I just wasn't.
Yeah.
That's.
Your question? I didn't hear that.
Yeah, the top part of the parking lot is that the second means of egress from the parking.
Is that egress?
Yeah, so the, the two means of egress are down on Ash Creek. What you're looking at, at the top, that looks like a little bit of a, of a curb cut is an easement that we have. Sorry?
Go ahead, keep going.
It's an easement we have for fire safety access. So it's not a means of egress. It's for the fire department only to get a truck in and out of there.
Urgency access.
Correct.
Okay, good. Cause that, that's good thing.
Yeah. Uh, secondly, um, I know this site too well. I've been, this is, this, the quality of work here, your vision is really encouraging. That parking lot on the corner is a particular eyesore and I see some nice landscaping. Is that within your remit to, to relandscape the, um, the, the, uh, brewery's parking lot? You're showing that on the plan as landscape gray area?
It's just parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Will you be re, is that, is that in your scope?
No, that's not our property.
It's, okay. Cause you, you're showing it as if it's going to be relandscaped and I was encouraged by that. So.
So, Eric, Eric Grains, do you want?
Are you, where, where, where is this?
This is our.
Land. So just, just to be clear, what we're. Commissioner Randolph, are you talking about the landscape buffer along that property line that Chair Noonan talked about or along?
Area that's showing nicely planted trees in the illicit parking lot. Is that?
So we are planting that boundary border. The curb line at the corner of Ash Creek and Black Rock. We're, we're not.
The planting islands along Black Rock, that's not in your weekend.
Yeah, then that's illicit. That's illicit's property, yes. Yeah.
I was encouraged by that.
I'm also partially colorblind, so when we're talking colors, it's.
Great. Okay. Uh, and then, uh, thirdly, uh, I, I assume a lot of your customer, a lot of your, your potential tenants will be taking the train. And the shortest point out of this building is the back door, just something you should consider. I think you'll be having a lot of traffic, uh, going out that northern, the, the plan north, uh, door. So that's something you would likely consider as, 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 as an entry, because right now it looks like it's not developed in the, in the plan. Which is a, that is nothing.
Understood. And we're finding and, and, and paving may, maybe a solution there. There is a, we purposely planned an elevator bank on that top right corner that comes off a sidewalk that runs continuously along the building. So people can come in off that sidewalk into that elevator.
A lot of people can be using that, just.
And that's the idea.
That's unsolicited, well, it's nothing to do with permitting, but I think your project, um, just generally the level of thoughtfulness, the, um, intent, the, looking at the Bullard is, is, uh, very, all very thoughtful. I appreciate your thoughtfulness on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown. Both egress and, are both, both entrances on Ash Creek Boulevard for both in and out?
Two, it's two-way?
Yeah, both ways. Yes.
And then the one that's closer to Metro Center would be the one where you go into the parking garage?
Mr. Sullivan, who's, uh, from MSO, is going to make a presentation.
Okay.
On traffic circulation and.
But if you go to the next slide, I can show you how the building works at the very least. So I'll, I'll go quickly now. Um, the first full plan, we talked about this a little bit. The, but the easiest way to describe the, the plan is how people use the building. So prospective tenant would come up to the front of the building, park in a future residence parking. You've probably seen that before. Uh, the way finding is simple because you put the entrance right down the middle, uh, via elaborate structure at the front of that. So you'll know where the front door is. Then you'd go in and you meet someone at leasing, they'll cheer you to the building. If you're a resident, you'd go into one of two driveways, uh, entrances into the parking garage. One, we're finally showing now, and the other one around the back. And to get to that one, you'd have to drive along illicit. Uh, this is boundary around the back of the building and into that garage. Um, a couple of the notes here, the move-ins are from the west side. There's a loading zone in there. Um, the move-in circulation is separated from the front of house. So truck could pull up into that loading zone and you would load to the back of the elevators and go up into your apartment, your new apartment. Uh, trash comes down from the upper stories. There's, uh, individual trash rooms on each floor with trash chutes that feed into a compactor. Those are compacted and building maintenance will take it over to a holding area at the back of the building. Um, and that's where, uh, trash, pickup will happen by trucks that turn in that area. I don't want to belabor this. Post Road has done this many times, many different markets and they're excellent at it. The building works, uh, for the use of, uh, for, for its intended use. So go to the second floor. So this is, this shows you the second floor. Now we're above the concrete deck. We, we have residential units wrapped in these courtyards. So if we get this right, uh, that, that amenity space will be very dramatic. You come in at the first floor, it's a two-volume space. Maybe a grand stair. We haven't designed it yet. You go up to the second floor. And once you have got the second floor, you get another idea of friction release. You release yourself to a massive courtyard which has an access with a small portal that goes into another courtyard. So again, highly amenitized building, we'll try and make it dramatic. Uh, it's about 21,000 square foot of external courtyard space between two courtyards. One intended to be more passive, maybe we landscape that to be a little more serene and one more active, uh, with a pool and, and girls and so on. All of that facing onto, uh, the amenity that's two volume, has a two-volume complex next to the first floor.
So is that green area though, open space?
The green is all open.
Yes, no ceiling.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
The interior units, not out of the street. They look only into the two courtyards?
There's, there's double loaded corridors. So everything, um, on that image that are facing the green will look into the courtyards and the other side of the corridor will look out into the streets.
Okay. The windows, the windows open?
Yes. Uh, this, this code limits you to four inches because of the falling hazard.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Code limits you to four inches when you're above a certain height due to, due to the falling hazard.
Okay.
Um, but they do open. Uh, and I just want to make a point about the amenities. Tom touched on this. The, uh, these amenities and how they help create communities is something Post Road and Beinfeld take pride in. And we'll take appropriate time and care to create something special here. We've done it before and we hope to do it again. So the next, uh, slide, Emily. Unless there are any other questions. So this, uh.
Oh, Commissioner Bukowski, sorry.
Just to clarify, so the courtyards are accessible from the second floor. So residents only. Okay. So the cowork space is also a visit. So the retail is.
Cowork is retail space on the first floor. Essentially retail space open to the public.
Opens to the public. Okay. And then are there additional retail spaces?
No, it's just that.
That's the cowork.
It's cowork. Now, if you're a member of the public and you're looking to rent in the, those are open. The, the front doors are open to that space, but there's a leasing put, leasing person, they will greet you and so on.
Okay. So it wouldn't be a building that I would go to to do something other than cowork.
As currently conceived, yes.
But it's not like a library. You go in, come and go as you want. This is, it's rented space to the public.
Except for the cowork space. And the cowork, the court, you have to, you have to, there's probably a purchase value there. You have to have a membership or whatever it is.
The cowork space?
The cowork space.
The cowork space is open to the public who doesn't rent.
It's open to the public through to-go rent.
To rent. That's what, that's where I was getting confused. Like, okay.
Um.
Commissioner Brown.
Do you anticipate members of the public renting out cowork space? And if so, where do they park? Do you have assigned parking?
So there's, there's ample parking around the site. Looked at our shared parking we feel would, you could park right at the front of the building. There's palace spaces right at the front on both sides of that street. Um, and there's parking all along that, uh, building. And again, the parking court. Can you point out the parking areas?
The parking total is three hundred fourteen spaces, right?
Three hundred four, two hundred forty-five inside, sixty-eight outside.
And that's to accommodate both the coworking and the three hundred fifty-seven bedrooms. I have a concern over parking.
There's a diagram for parking in the back.
Have a sign parking?
I wouldn't say it's a sign.
No, we won't, won't have a sign parking, no.
We do comply with parking requirements that you established, uh, through the amendments.
And Commissioner Braun, one other aspect that we're sort of fortuitously advantaged with. And this isn't in our calculations at all, but the train station.
Yeah.
Which during the day is currently at forty percent occupancy, at night is obviously much less, is open to the public. So if there's any overflow needed for cowork, for example, people are free to use, to use that space.
How do you walk, can you, can you walk from the train station to here? Like?
Oh, yeah, sidewalk, siding.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alright, so I'm just gonna finish off here, so, um.
Right, can we get to, um.
Yeah, typical floor plans.
Well, yeah, let's go to the roof. And I think we're about, yes, uh, so again, double loaded corridor, a mix of units that I described. Um, multiple elevator cores and stair cores allow you to permeate to various spaces. Um, a trash, trash room discussed, so you don't walk your trash down, go into shoot, goes down. I guess that's good for you. Uh, I'm ready for, go to the next one. This is the roof plan. Just wanted to show you this because we have about five thousand square foot of roof amenity. Again, we've made a goal, um, sunbathing opportunities in sun and that, Ash Creek and, uh, these.
Can you speak up just a little?
Yes, of course. These are, the five thousand square foot of roof amenity in green on, at the corner will overlook Ash Creek. And another note here that these buildings have very small mechanical units. It's, it's almost all electric. We haven't made those final decisions on HVAC, but they have condensers in the roof. Those are internalized, so it, uh, to the middle of the building, so. You don't see it from the street. The sidelines prevent you from doing that, from seeing that. Um, and then finally. I think we're confident that this team, Post Residential, Post Residential Banfield Act, they should complete something that adds value to the town and area. Uh, we've done that before and we hope to do it again in the opportunity.
Thank you guys. Questions, Commissioner Bukowski?
I just, I just wanted to have a little bit more insight into, as far as like, I know that this area was looking to. Bring the general public to this area, right, and increase walkability, um, increase retail. And so. I'd like a general public, um, resident who I have to go into work, so. Um, I wouldn't necessarily visit this site the way it's proposed. So was, is there any consideration for thinking about retail, um, opportunities that might draw somebody like me in? Wouldn't necessarily use a cowork site. It is a beautiful site and it is. Just thinking about that, that piece of, though.
So it's a.
Sorry?
The programming of the exterior of the outside. Yes, so in, in general, the goal here is to create, as for this overall district, a sense of critical mass. We view this site as being that connection piece to create this cohesive district. Because it's the literal and figurative connection between one aspect of it with illicit and the accurate site on the other end. To do that, we included walking paths and points of connectivity. That will allow people throughout the district to get in and out of the various parcels, um, through our site. For one example, we also gave piece of, a piece of land of our site in the rear, near that fire access easement area. To create a safe, walkable path for people coming off the train platform to the brewery through our site. Leave up our land to do that. We also have pedestrian connectivity paths to get folks from the train or that path. To the Ash Creek open space walking area. Now, your, your question's a good one about, you know, you or I going there, right? This is a mixed-use residential building. It's not a office building. It's not a retail establishment. We have retail components in there and activated storefront to create a sense of activation twenty-four seven there. And we will have, uh, vibrant activation in the cowork space. Now, whether that's cowork or a restaurant. We feel like the market demand for, for cowork is there, given sort of the examples we gave with our past projects. And also, just like practically speaking, we work right above Las Vegas, you know, coffee shop, down there multiple times a day getting coffee. Nine times out of ten, there are fifteen to twenty people there on their computer working. So generally speaking, we do believe there is a strong demand for people to go there and work and interact with others. Um. So the market demand for the multifamily aspect of this, we believe is, is certainly there. And then we believe the sort of synergistic uses that we're able to provide, in addition to our neighbors. Is what's going to create this activation for, for future growth, right? We're hoping that this isn't the only project that sort of is, uh. In this area, so.
Um, so can I add as, as a, as a designer, uh, just two things. One is, Tom was absolutely right about density. You need the density first. Hopefully this is the first in the cog that is developed in this larger area. Uh, we see this as a partnership with illicit, because they have, what, twenty thousand square?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Partnership with illicit, illicit has twenty thousand square foot of brewery next door.
Is it? Okay.
And, and people hopefully park and walk through our site to get to that brewery.
Park at the train station?
Or, or park, if they're parking at the train station, parking and walk along our, our sidewalk to get to that, to that side, if there, if there's not a parking at illicit. And then finally, uh, creating a place, a sense of place and community is, is really important. The Post Residential, we've been working with them for years and know that. And programming the building is a huge part of that. And program, programming that external space to actually have events is part of the success.
Maybe you can talk about that then, because you didn't mention that.
Talk about the little motor court. Yeah, so I mean, Eric could go through in detail, but.
The concept.
Yeah, the logic concept there is that the, the three, there's two points of visibility. One coming across a bridge like I mentioned, and one when you're driving down Ash Creek in this view, and you'll see that, that court first. With the backdrop of the building. It's intentionally designed with a, with three bay backdrop over that central core. And that court was designed that it could be circumvented, uh, the traffic could be circumvented. You could shut that down, the building still works. But that court could be shut down up to where that central area is and success of it depends on the programming of it.
Yeah, and our idea right now, if we, instance, is that this space, that motor court area. Is going to be open to the public at certain times when we have curated events. Those could be, you know, music and art events. Those could be food truck events that, you know, on a Saturday, the whole community is invited and you have three food trucks up on the curb and music going and. Like, we would love to go to that, right? Um, so that specific area even has specific curbing details to allow for that to happen.
Right.
So you can, you can even deck over it to create a stage for, uh, a music event, so. The, the outdoor space is going to be interactive, um, which we think will. Really great for the overall area.
Uh, I, I want to bring up another project, but just to bring up, at that point home is Tom's, uh, company that did a project in New Haven. Cool set, uh, and over the.
Was it Corsair? And over the years it's become.
Corsair.
Corsair, C O R S A I R, Corsair.
Wasn't that a plane?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And they had a story also. Side of that history is where they used to make the propellers for that military aircraft. Hence, we call the.
But the, the reason I'm bringing that up is that it's a integral part of the fabric of that area now, last few years. Largely in part because Post Residential allowed the community to use the space. They allowed them, if they had events, a fashion show, whatever it is, they allow them to use that space. It's that intent. Programming and community interaction that makes this, makes a successful community, but it only happens with programming and engagement.
Yeah, I'm really glad, Commissioner, you asked that question, because personally, I, one of the things I was most excited about from the start. Is this area that we're talking about now, this area where programming and, and what, what, uh, Sealan and Tom have described. Think of that, you know, if you got a, a nice spring day going and you have some sort of a cultural event. And or, you know, food trucks, music, in the combination of the, the illicit participation and people, I think it will be. A, a kind of a vibrant, uh, area that will have real attraction to people who don't necessarily live in the, in the, in, in the complex itself. That, that's what it at least is designed to do, and I think it will succeed.
To drive the point home, I think we pressed you when you had the regulation amendments. I think you could put a restaurant or retail space in there.
Yeah.
You wanted to. And we pressed you on that because I think to Commissioner Bukowski's point, we wanted to bring people in. Um, and it's obviously your right to do as, you know, and we, uh, with your expertise, put in the, the, um, homework spot. But your thought is, as you said, get the people down there, here as a picture role of being that, uh. You may be potentially to be the first anchor for residential, because you have illicit, you have the other things on the other side that are gonna have retail in their own right. Um, and I mean, we saw the hotel coming up potentially as well. Who knows where that, um, uh, what's that concourse area gonna be? But you, that, you feel your role is in what you're providing, knowing what else is coming around you?
You feel that what we're providing in the application at hand meets the market demand that we're trying to go for.
That's the area that's.
The area.
Essentially, at least being presented to us at this point.
Sure, yeah, okay. We wouldn't be doing that if we didn't believe that.
Commissioner, uh, I see Mr. Wood, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on your, your question and your comment. I just, uh, I want to hearken back to the discussion that took place when the regulation amendments that preceded this application happened. Um, last year, and the idea was our, our TOD plan identifies, um. Retail primary frontages that we think ought to be, uh. Actual retail bona fide commercial uses, but recognize there are sites, and this is one, where that frontage. Doesn't necessarily lend itself to traditional retail, but if we look at this holistically as a district rather than a parcel-by-parcel basis. We will achieve that mix. For exam, as, and as this applicant has already explained, if, you know, if, if there was not a property line between illicit. In this, it would far exceed the commercial standards of an individual parcel. But if we look at this district collectively, rather than on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we can, we can achieve.
I remember that.
And our plan does call out areas that are primary retail frontages and the reg amendment that was, uh. Proved, it's about those sites that are not on primary retail frontages can, can calculate that. Commercial space or non-residential space differently.
No, thank you for highlighting that. I remember that now. Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I was curious, what, I guess what demographic are you trying to appeal to? I ask that because in Fairfield, we have a racial imbalance, and I believe kids who would live here in this building would go to McKinley School. McKinley School, you live here, you know, it's, um, has racial or is, meets the state's definition of racial imbalance, so. Do you stress that?
Yeah, is the question on our customer?
Customer.
Balance at McKinley.
It was a three hundred, yeah, I mean, it's three hundred and seventy-seven bedrooms. You know, ten, three bedrooms. So I'm curious, like, what is your customer?
Yeah, so, um, it's a good question, because as I mentioned, that's what we think about first. As an anecdotal example, at the Anchorage, it was a unique customer that is different and distinct from this. Customer there was a downsizing baby boomer coming out of Greenfield Hill, for example. The customer for this project is going to be most likely a young family that wants to eventually buy a single-family home in Fairfield. And is waiting for more single-family houses to be built in Fairfield. Or that enjoys the renter lifestyle of not having to own a home. I think the average age, if we had to guess, in this building is probably gonna be. Twenty-seven to thirty-five years old and on the precipice, but not yet, having, uh. Having formed a household or having kids yet. Yeah.
Do you anticipate, kind of similar to the Anchorage, like those, that, I guess, that baby boomer generation? Or you think this is more a young person's?
Um, the Anchorage example is unique. I, I don't think the, um. I don't think the customer's gonna be the same, no. I think that's, uh, I don't, I don't think they're gonna be the same, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corcello, I have a question following up on Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I actually also, I had a very similar question to Commissioner Harrison. We, I, I, generally speaking, I think this is a really, uh, thoughtful proposal. Uh, I think it's very well suited to the site, but I do, uh, you know, we've, we have heard a lot from, uh, folks, especially in the McKinley District. Uh, about the, not only the racial imbalance, the overcrowding, everything there. And so I, I think this says some forty-two percent of the. Units are two and three bedroom. So I, I wonder if you've thought about, uh, you know. The feasibility of shifting unit mix more in favor of studios and one bedrooms. Just given the, uh, the impact and, and the potential for easing the, the impact on, uh, on McKinley by doing that.
Thank you. Um, Emily, is it possible?
Maybe go ahead and scroll.
Grow, to go nearly all the way down to the bottom?
Let me ask my question, because I, um, I think it bounces off that and gives her, her second.
Yeah.
Anchorage, I understand you, you've said a few times is unique, but what, for your other projects that are similar to this, how often do you see school-aged children in there? Okay, a little bit of both.
So, um. I can just give you exact numbers. So the industry standard is that. Uh, for multifamily projects, is that you're gonna create one new student for every, I'm sorry, you're gonna create. Point one-three new students for every multifamily residential unit. If you look at two closest projects to us that are comparable, i.e. the trademark and Alto. The actual data shows that it's fifty percent of the industry benchmark, meaning they only create point zero-six new students per, per unit. Uh, and that's reflective of our projects in Metro Boston too. Uh, it's about point zero-six to point zero-seven new students created per, per unit, so half of the industry standard. Which is four or five times less in single-family home creation for new students. Um, anticipating this might come up, I just put some information together. Basically, this chart, which nobody can read, I'll just explain it, shows that.
It is.
About three quarters of the way in.
This is just Fairfield Public School enrollment data, which shows that. School enrollment over the past ten years in Fairfield Public Schools has come down. Over the past ten years, it's come down five percent relative, uh, it's come down five percent. So, um, the average, said in other words, the average over the last ten years for public school enrollment is five percent higher than it is now. Um, so we completely understand this is a big topic. But this is just the granular data that shows where I got all of that, which is available on the public school website. Um. You have a multifamily project that is delivering less students to public schools. Uh, than single-family homes, and you have a relatively balanced demographic of this new community. And the data would say that any imbalance is actually gonna come more in balance. As a more widespread or average across demographics are introduced into any new public school system. So, um, you don't feel like we are going to add any more imbalance to the McKinley School problem. And frankly, I don't personally believe it's a multifamily problem. I think it, one of the biggest things is that it's a demographic reality of a bunch of. People in their mid-thirties finally starting to think about forming households and, uh, starting families.
And I think the trademark and experience, I don't know if we have what, but.
No, we have, the trademark data is, is in this packet. I think it's right there, actually. The trademark has a hundred and one units. There are seven Fairfield Public School students, resulting in that. Ratio of point zero-six. Alto, same thing. It has a hundred and sixty units. It has ten students, if I can read correctly, producing a very similar ratio. So the conclusion there is that the new student creation for multifamily projects is, you know, four times less than what the single-family home generation is, so.
And I just, I, 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 I think it's been well said. I just don't think the, the, the assumption should be made a, as a premise that. This development is gonna exacerbate any conditions or situations that might impact McKinley, because I think. because I think we have actual data based upon very similar proximate developments. They don't, and that's been my experience, for what it's worth. With every other development that I've done of this type in Trumbull or other places, they don't generate the kind of children family, single family homes or subdivisions, for example.
I'll just say, I mean, I think, I mean, I've looked at all the data. And I think if we're we're talking about one project, you could make the case that one project does not go to have a big impact. The same way we sort of talk about, we're not looking at this as a one off. When the question about from Commissioner Mikowski about retail, we talked about how you have to consider the other retail that may be attracted. So it is, you have to sort of take a holistic view. This is like an area of Fairfield that's being developed. We're adding a lot of housing here. I think it's a place where we should be adding housing. But you have to consider that not just the school children that are going to be generated here. And I think this is not a you problem necessarily, but we do have to figure out there is a bigger issue that we need to think about in terms of how not only do we, you know, have to think about things like shifting toward studios and one bedrooms in this area, but yeah, the other piece of that that as a commission we have to figure out is are there other parts of town where we need to increase two and three bedroom units to to fix the balance on the other end? So that's not entirely a you issue, but I think we can't just say that this particular development is not going to have a huge impact. So we should just sort of leave it, leave the mix intact. I think we do need to, every project that comes along, consider, you know, can we shift the balance a little bit more in favor of smaller bedroom sizes to to do a little bit with each project?
Good. Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Montelli, you said, was it point one, point thirteen students per, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the the industry standard, which I think I received from the Clancy study as as well as.
That multiplier, that would be like six to seven students probably in this in this residence?
Uh, yeah.
Probably half of them will be going to McKinley. I mean, we don't really know, but again, I think, I think to your point, I think, you know, we do have concerns.
Sorry, it's not good.
I would just say that, I think, as a town, we are, we live here, you know, you care about this community, as you said, and we have to think about the redistricting and this racial balance because it's not on the line. We certainly don't want to exacerbate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I I I agree that it's an important issue. The point one, three is that industry standard, which would create that figure. The data shows for comparable projects, it's half of that, meaning the nearby trademark and Alto. So point zero six.
Okay, so I I've seen data presented to the board about it, and I thought we could use the, what, I'm sorry?
No, no, the point one, three is is the correct industry standard. We just augmented that with, hey, let's look at the projects right around the corner that are comparable in unit size and project type. And let's see how many actual students are in there and just compare that against the industry standard to have a comparison.
You know, the one thing too is I wouldn't put so too much, I mean, I appreciate the comments and I and I think if they're they're important and thoughtful from your perspective, but I wouldn't put too much pressure on yourself relative to this commission and your decisions with regard to land use and how they might implicate, for example, the McKinley situation. I know there was a dialogue and Mr. Went actually participated. And it seems to be the most popular program on Fair TV because every time I turn it on, it's still Mr. Went talking to the Board of Education about the issue. I don't know. He's just, he has a star quality about him. But but seriously, I think when you listen to his testimony and when you analyze it, development in and of itself, whether it be through subdivision development or developments of such or this kind, or whether it involve one or two or three, although I get the point you're making in terms of bedrooms. I don't think that's what's really, when you look at the statistics objectively, that's what's driving the issues for McKinley. There are some hard decisions to be made there. But I I don't think the board, this board, this commission put undue pressure that somehow you're exacerbating or causing those problems because the data, as Mr. Went pointed out in his testimony in terms of the number of housing units approved over the last decades and how that's correlated into student enrollment doesn't really hold that up.
And not to put a too fine a point on it, too. I mean, my understanding is these types of considerations is probably not something we should even be considering in special, or are we special permit? Special permit, special permit application, correct?
At least I didn't want to be blunt, but I I.
I I don't, I think we'd all, there's nothing wrong with what the commission has been saying. This is a broader context all of Fairfield to have to consider. But I mean, I I will be blunt for you because I think that's, you know, within our, we have a responsibility to uphold our regulations. And I think that's the case unless you disagree.
I do not.
Yeah, that's my fair. So Commissioner Braun.
Well, I do think density, you know, there's density and then there's density in a very large project. So I think that is a valid consideration. But so just getting back to the enrollment, so is my math right? If it is point one, three, the industry standard times two hundred and forty five units, that would be thirty two children? Is that wrong? How do you just?
Six, point one, three, three. It's not one point.
What am I doing wrong with the math? It's point one, three.
Thirteen percent, is it?
No, it's point one, three.
I I'm doing thirteen percent, so it's point oh, one, three?
As as Commissioner Harrison said, it's seven.
Six, seven.
Correct. It's it just, I went for the record, not to step in too much here, but the the point one, three standard that Mr. Montelli refers to is actually our local collected data. And and so that's every single development in town that has ten or more units, it's two thousand twenty four hundred some odd units. What the the point, the finer point that Mr. Montelli was saying is that the more recent developments are producing school aged children at a rate than that, it's point zero six. So while the average across all of those developments is point one, three students per unit, the more recent developments are producing half that rate, it it point zero six.
Does the two and three bedroom ratio compare to trademark and Alto? Like ours is like ninety two units of two bedroom and ten units of three bedroom in this proposal. Is that comparable in terms of, I guess you could say it's?
I don't know the exact numbers, but I will say that the the, if I heard Mr., I the numbers came in rather quickly, but if I heard Mr. Crisillo's math, there's forty two percent or two and three bedroom units. That would be a higher percentage of larger units than in some of the other developments, maybe not so much in Anchorage. But for Alto, there are some too. I don't think there are any three bedroom units.
Forty percent of these units are multi bedroom, two or two or three bedroom. Is Alto or trademark comparable? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how many Alto and trademark generated seventeen kids in the most recent year you looked at. Four years ago.
October, October of this year. I'm sorry, the enrollment date of October of twenty twenty three.
Okay, so. I don't know if they have the same, if forty percent of those are two or three bedrooms like they are at this one, but.
Better come two, twenty five. So what's the question there? How many, what's the breakdown between?
Yeah, we're we're tossing around numbers, but what's the breakdown between one, two and three bedrooms?
Our unit mix.
Yes.
Nine percent studios. Fifty percent one bedrooms.
Fifty percent. Yeah, let me give you the numbers.
Forty percent two and three bedroom, right?
Thirty eight percent two bedrooms, four percent four bedrooms.
That's what I thought.
Four bedrooms, three bedrooms. Three bedrooms, I'm sorry, four percent three bedrooms.
So I just want to, I asked the question, I hear the answer to. Fifty percent of the units are one bedroom.
Right.
And only four percent of the units are, I mean, we hear three bedrooms and we think like, oh, the clamettes are moving in. Three, three, three bed, three, three, four percent are three bedroom. So I I that doesn't disregard the discussion, but fifty percent are one bedroom. Nine percent are studio.
Correct.
So almost sixty percent of the units are one bedrooms and studios. And the balance of thirty, forty six, forty six percent are are two bedrooms, right? No, thirty six percent are two bedrooms and then four percent are a couple of three bedrooms.
So about forty one percent are two or three bedroom, and I don't know how that compares to Alto or. Well, the bottom line is you would expect at least a similar amount of of kids generated, seven, maybe seventeen or sixteen.
Yeah, and and the other you got to keep in mind, too, again, in my experience, is we're trying to address the market here to make the project feasible. And that's particularly important here where the the cost of development of this project, because of its brownfield history, make financing, financial parameters somewhat tenuous. And the market really, what what's driving the market now, at least partially, is 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 a two bedroom situation because not only, because whether you're empty nesters like me or somebody, you you like that second bedroom for when the kids come visit or whatever. So you don't want to shrink these developments, which have such benefits, so that all of a sudden you can't provide market what the market's looking for, and then your viability becomes a problem.
Commissioner Roundoff.
Um, so two two questions. I don't know if you have the answer to this one, but of the seventeen students who are in the trademark also, do we know the ages of those students? Mr. Fusion?
Yes, I I don't know sitting here, but I could tell you what schools they attend.
But oh, but are there high school students in here and middle school students?
I I don't know sitting here, but I can answer that question. I have that data.
So it's, but generally speaking, it's not all going to be elementary school students.
Correct.
So I just wanted to get that up. And then secondly, I don't know, Mr. Went, or you guys have answered this. Is there, what's what's the tax revenue estimated to be? What is, why don't you tell me what it is for?
Well, I could tell you in general of the the three, the three largest, trademark, Alto and Anchorage, it's roughly seventy five hundred dollars a unit.
Excuse me. Yes. So seventy five hundred per unit, and then we've got we've got students in ten percent or less of the units, thirteen percent, six is thirteen percent of the units.
Far less.
So it's going to be about seventy to a hundred and forty thousand dollars per student generated in this building?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Try to do the math.
Right.
To make a decision, so.
Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I'm not putting this racial imbalance on you or the developer. I I just think it's a worthy of a discussion, you know, at this table because it is a big issue. So I just, I just want to be clear on that. I appreciate you asking my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. While we move forward.
Mr. Rains has been waiting so patiently. And before we got talking about enrollment, a lot of what we were talking about really is right in his wheelhouse because Eric Rains is our landscape architect, very, very well regarded throughout the state. And he's going to talk to you about our landscape architectural design. And also he'll touch on matters pertaining to the connectivity and pedestrian circulation.
Eric. Thank you. Thank you, John. Eric Rains, landscape architect, for the record. I'll go through what I was planning to to say, and I think it essentially would would touch on the topics that 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 came up a few minutes ago. But if I don't, please feel free to let me know. Probably the best exhibit to first look at is the is the site plan rendering. It gives you a sense of the of the spatial definition that that we're accomplishing between particularly our property and the illicit property. I think there was a question earlier about plant material, and it is along that edge that we're utilizing plant material to help give this building a sense of place. The scale of space that exists around this building is rather large. And and plant material is a good tool to use to help bring that scale down and focus people on particular aspects of a of a of an area or a section of of an of a district like this. Within this, you'll see the on the front edge of along Ash Creek Boulevard in providing, and the next exhibit will be a circulation diagram. But in considering and providing how people are going to move to and around and through the site. And we took advantage of the of the area we have in front of the building between the building and Ash Creek to actually bring the sidewalk away from the curb and closer to the building. And so so it does a couple of things. One is it elevates the the pedestrian a little bit and it gets, and we provided seating for the public right in in front of the building. Because primarily because it gives them the rare opportunity to look all the way down Ash Creek and and see the the openness that that Ash Creek offers. It was a vantage point that I became fond of just after first visiting the site, that it's a rare opportunity to see Ash Creek in that way, except rather than just looking across it, which is typically what happens. So and and so in 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 making that observation and trying to figure out how to how to give that to the public, we put seating at the highest point of that of that walkway after we pulled it away from the curb. So that the public, should they should they discover the same view, they could stop and sit and have a cup of coffee or spend that time there with the sunsets or or just looking at the horizon down down Ash Creek. So by bringing the public into the site, and this 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 illustration shows the pedestrian circulation in the blue dots that that are there on the sheet there. So the pedestrian can come to and from the site off of the Ash Creek Boulevard edge. They can turn into the site. Exactly. So they can turn into the site on the eastern portion here and walk alongside the building. They can turn into the site on the western edge here and walk along the side of the building all the way back to the point where they could then go through this connection and get up onto the Metro North platform. They also have the opportunity, pedestrians also have the opportunity to come from the platform and go to that same location and he'd walk all the way across the back of our our site over to illicit. Or they can use the same, the same blue dots and and make their way alongside the building. We've provided openings in the planting that I just mentioned between our property and the illicit property. And there's they're designated there with these arrows so that so that the interconnectivity between the two properties is as strong as possible. Again, trying to give people the flexibility to move around however they're the most comfortable and 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 make it intuitive at the same time so that they don't, they don't, they don't get lost. We don't have dead ends anywhere, so which is which is good when you're talking about circulation. This drawing also shows the the event space that we were talking about here in in this courtyard. And if you've noticed this line right across the edge of it there, Ceylan had mentioned that were there an event here that that this portion below that line is where the event could occur. And it would not interrupt the vehicular traffic that needs to access the site to get into the garage. So both can concur, both can happen concurrently. And and we felt that by by making sure that that was the case, then the building wouldn't be shut down during an event. But it would still, it would still provide the opportunity to host the events. And as been said before, Post Road Residential does a fantastic job of programming, bringing in vendors and food trucks and events that 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 not only the residents enjoy, but also given its given its proximity to the parking lot for the commuter parking lot, as well as the access off of Ash Creek Boulevard. We would envision that people would 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 be drawn to this during an event. Hopefully, events would happen on a regular basis, and so people would know the first Tuesday might be barbecue day or, you know, whatever. And we've selected material, paving materials in here. Tom had mentioned this centerpiece here, we've we've designed it a multiple curb so that it wouldn't impede or or reduce the ability for vehicular movement through the space. So we we felt by doing that, it makes the space space as flexible as possible so that if it's one, one, say, if the food truck, one truck, or if it's three trucks, they would still be able to get in, maneuver and have plenty of room for visitors. And a non event and on a non event day, we've integrated a water element in the center of the space so that when when it's a regular day and that and people are using that for for the comings and goings of to the to the shared workspace or or visiting the building, there would be a water element that would be active in that space contingency. So there would always be something going on there that would be of interest to both residents and and the general public. So beyond that, the the selection of 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 plant material is, again, we 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 use the the need for larger scale canopy kinds of elements. If you go back to the prior slide to help to help define to help define the event space. So we've wrapped that in, you know, in in trees that would have, you know, a little bit larger canopy over time. And then along the planted all the edges where people would be walking as they move through these spaces up to the north edge of the property where they make their way onto Metro North. And then I've already spoken about the edge along here. There was a question about the building itself and what with the lower level of the parking. If you see this very thin zone right along this edge here, it's it's a planting, a planting zone that 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 we were able to coordinate as a team and and provide. There's a structure that'll be in there. It's a green screen material is what it's called, and it'll it'll, it will hold plant material so that when people are walking by there, they're not necessarily looking in. looking into the front ends of cars, nor will they have the experience of cars coming and going where headlights are are panning across the adjacent property, so it it does several things, it keeps it keeps the vehicular movement quieter and it makes the walking experience a lot more enjoyable. That seems.
Is that not similar to the parking lot at Fairfield University, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Use a green screen there.
Yes, yes. The same element occurs here on the on the west side. So give again, you utilize the plant material in strategic ways to to enhance the pedestrian site lighting is another component that's here, we have a combination of pole lights, baller lights and those are in the package with with the analysis, but we've picked lights that are full cutoff fixtures that respect the night sky, the dark sky requirements and don't and don't bleed off into the rest of the neighborhood. And I think that's pretty much it, if I didn't cover any of the topics that came up earlier, please.
Commissioner Braun.
So. Was there any thought considered making instead of that sort of like a party deck, making it a sort of more natural green space and what is the area of that outdoor like space?
If you you mean the square footage of it?
Yeah. Because what's there now is all natural greenery, I know it's.
She's asking. So she's asking about.
Square footage of that.
It's area right.
The program space?
Well, the whole area with the parking and the.
So your first question about being vegetated, if it's vegetate, what we what we decided to do was use areas like more like in front of the building to enhance the vegetation in this area, if it's if it's if it if it were more vegetation, then that would limit its use for events, particularly for the vehicular traffic that might come and go or the setting up of the stage.
I was just thinking maybe an open space area would be good in in a large development like this, like a natural open space area.
If you if you go back one more slide, we just to remind you, we do have the two internal courtyards for residents. So the first one here is open space for the residents, which is the more active.
Open space, I mean, natural, I don't mean, you know. Rachel, I mean, not, you know, natural, like a garden, like a natural garden with native plant.
Yeah, some of the it 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 comes down to the usability, the usefulness of it related to how the building could be programmed. And in our case, we we opted for for this direction so that we could so that we could vegetate the edges of the property and that's again why the canopy trees are so important that they'll.
Trees are that?
They're a mix of of. London plane trees.
What?
London plane trees, sycamores.
Those are all native?
There's an American sycamore, it's native.
The other first one.
And then two look poplar.
What was the first one you said?
The both, the first two I said are the American sycamore.
Oh, you said something.
I gave the botanical, sorry.
Oh, okay. And are there any shrubs being planted or just trees?
There are shrubs along the along the edge of the of both sides of the parking structure.
Is there any concern about? Because this whole site is being remediated with a plastic membrane, is that an issue with planting trees that have roots that grow down or no?
The membrane, so there's openings in the membrane that the plant material would 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 come throughout and I don't know the exact system that's being used, but there is a. So the compatibility of those two is is. It's not a plastic membrane on top.
It's actually there.
It's a porous membrane, it's a it's a fabric, right?
Yeah, there's actually no need for a membrane.
Have trees with roots going through the membrane?
So there's no membrane, it's a.
I guess when we get to that, we'll get to that. Nothing about the remediation plan that prevents you from planting any kind of planting?
Correct.
Okay.
The other plant you're asking about along this edge, these are red maples along this edge here.
So my only my only thought is when you drive by there now, it looks like it's about acre or two, I don't know how big it maybe it's half an acre, that whole area, it looks like it's just being paved over, right now it's all natural. It's scrub, you know, it's not pretty, but it's natural and now it's being completely paved over, so that's always a concern of mine.
And in a in a general sense, the plant material that's being brought in is is not invasive material, probably what's there today is is a mix of invasive material and and a mix of shorter term.
Right.
Lifespan kinds of material. So in the grand in a grand sense. The plant material palette that's been selected is a much longer term vision for for plant material in general, the the canopy benefit that it would be offered by this project from an environmental perspective is multiple times greater than than that of the volunteer and invasive.
Thinking of impervious surface and, you know, every I drive around town, every project we've approved that looks beautiful, I'm thinking of. Black Rock Turnpike, Mayor Parkway, there's no trees left and Mill Plain Road, I mean, I go around these projects, it looked like there was going to be tons of trees, there's nothing there anymore, there's no screening, so I would I would I would prefer to have more greenery and a little less impervious surface, that's just my thought, because right now it's all natural right there, the water can percolate through and it is being completely paved over right in that area right there.
We've done, we've done several projects.
Do pervious pavement at least?
The pavement, the vehicular pavement that that we need to provide there can have wider joints on it, I have to speak with.
Have what?
wider joints in it.
Which is which is done with pervious, you're saying?
It becomes that if the joints become wide enough, so we'd have to I need to speak with the civil and find out what the implications that mean, but just back to the benefit that when you when you talk about infiltration. Tree canopies do an incredible job of stormwater storage that the water never makes it to the ground and when it does, it's slower, so it does all the things that Mr. Romano was speaking about earlier, so I I wouldn't trade it off, I wouldn't trade away canopy trees quickly because they provide benefit just by their very nature and we're not introducing technology to make them do that, all we're doing is introducing trees that have a much longer and much more durable lifespan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Randolph.
I commend you on your landscape design, it looks very thoughtful and I appreciate the density, what's the caliper of the trees you're going to put?
They're planted, some will go in at three, three and a half inch caliper and then and then the balance, which I think is the greater.
Fire back to Commissioner Braun's concern about the trees show of under three that disappointed when they go in, so I think a denser tree cover would would be appreciated. And then secondly. The walking corridor, it looks like your your sidewalks ride hard up against the asphalt. This this is a I drive through here fairly regularly, but people speed through here, it's a very, it's a very unwelcoming place to walk right now and I know that with the new apartment building over just across the creek, you get a lot of people walking there, but you could make sure you take that into consideration, potentially consider with a lot of trees between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay.
To make it. Because a lot of people walk here now.
And just on your caliper, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just on your caliper question, the balance are four or four and a half inch caliper, so that's built in already.
That's 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 great, yeah, and a four to four and a half inch tree is how tall?
Oh, it's gotta be twenty two, twenty five.
It's big. Captain Egypt, I'm sorry, I was asking about the caliper of the tree and London plane trees, they're the ones on Brookside, full trees on Brookside. Great choice, but the calipers four and a half inches and the and the height is twenty two feet?
Yeah, twenty two, twenty five feet tall.
You're saying that width of the tree is four and a half inches, that's skinny, isn't it?
It's a baby tree.
Okay, when they're planted.
When they're planted, yes.
How tall do they get?
Uh, second, the London plane trees.
Seventy feet.
Seventy.
This might not be for you, but in one of the drawings, there was a blue line that goes kind of all through the area where the landscaping is, is that like the like number forty point oh six, kind of zigzags through this area?
I think it's the next one.
Is that a flood line?
Do you?
Line that goes through that whole end like zigzags through.
That's a walking path.
No, no, because it goes through the building, it looks like. It looks like it might be, what is that? Flood plain?
Old flood. What what, sorry, what page are you looking at?
I'm looking at forty point oh six, it's really far down.
So where the FEMA map does not meet the.
So you're that's not going to be other water, is what you're saying?
Oh, no, well, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask one more question, sorry, can you give a list of the trees and the quantity sometimes, is that in here?
Yes, if you go.
Oh, it's a later on down?
It's later, yes, it's all.
On the landscape plan.
Yep.
It's not in the landscaping section, so.
It's further, further back.
Further back, okay, that's fine, like an appendix, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Lastly. David Sullivan of SLR, our traffic engineer, has prepared and submitted with our application its traffic analysis and he will give you a brief summary and overview on that, answer any questions that you might have.
Finally, we have a gentleman after him for the environmental.
If there if there are questions.
Okay, well then, yes, because I think there were questions, guys.
Good evening, again, David Sullivan, I'm a principal in SLR and I manage the traffic transportation. So we put together just a few slides, trying to keep it at a high level, try to touch some of the findings and walkthroughs. So the first slide talks about the scope of the study, so essentially we gather existing conditions data, crash data, traffic volume data, and then with. So with all that information, develop a profile of what the existing conditions are in the area, we then review the site, the the safety of the site, things like sightlines, we then generate traffic for the site, determine how much traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian traffic will be generated by the site and then we do the traditional impact study, the impact essentially is looking into the future for a couple of years and saying this is what's going to happen, this is what the characteristics of the area are without this development and then when we add this development, what the characteristics are in terms of load of service, there are those results in that, the essential impact of the traffic impacts. So briefly on the different conditions, the crashes, crash data was unremarkable five years' data and along the site furniture, I think. So accidents and almost all of the accidents that we looked at were property damage only, I think there might have been one minor injury information. Traffic counts. In the previous slide, our analysis intersection, so essentially we looked at Black Rock Turnpike, Commerce Drive and we went down to. Ash Creek intersection, then we got the other of Ash Creek. So that was our study area, we looked at the morning and afternoon hour and when you collected the data, we started this project. Last spring, I guess it is, and at that time, we thought it was a good idea to work with the consultant for Metro Project because we understood they were coming in for a change, so we worked with Hardesty and Hanover, who's their traffic consultant, the intention was that we would use the same data so that you wouldn't be wouldn't have the issue of comparing existing data too, so we collected the data together, unfortunately, their timeline's a little different than our timeline and I'm not sure when it'll be in front of you, but that that was the data collected, the morning and afternoon peak hours. This is the traffic findings, again, we looked at the background traffic, which is the traffic that is will come to fruition without this development, so we we talked to the DOT, they give us a growth rate for take the existing council. Some percentage and then we also look at other developments that have been approved. Take the traffic for those through developments and add that to the background traffic, that's essentially our no build scenario that we'll look at, we then estimate the traffic for this development and in this case, the two hundred and forty five units and the approximately six thousand square feet of the co-workspace, we actually generated that as regular office space because there's not really a co-workspace category in the data we use, but we estimate in the morning peak hour, there'd be eighty seven trips in plus out, mostly out in the morning as you would expect and eighty trips in the afternoon with the majority entering the site as you would expect for residential development. We also get data on pedestrian trips and the walking transit type trips, they estimate about thirty in each of the peak hours, so that's a proximity to the train station is very important here and as you can see, those type of trips that occur in the peak hour, which are mostly work trips, a quarter to a third of them are now going to be walker bike trips, that if this was a suburban location, would be largely all motor vehicle trips. So I'll cut to the last slide, which kind of summarizes our findings, I talked about the level of service and the at each of those intersections, we get letter grades for each of the intersections, they go from A to F, just like school grades, A is very good, F is not so good, C and D are generally acceptable in environments such as this, all the movements and all of the intersections that we analyzed essentially work in the acceptable level of service and there will change if any of our study areas. There was one exception at the intersection of Commerce Drive and Black Rock Turnpike, there's the left turn when you're coming, I'll call it westbound, that left turn is sluggish. So we looked at it and indeed it is sluggish today and in our analysis, it gets a little bit more sluggish when you add on the metro traffic onto the background, we're adding cars to that. There is a quick fix, I'm not sure if it's if it warrants being fixed as part of this, but certainly it could be a simple timing change of two or three seconds, would readjust the the movements there, in this particular case, I think if you could take that left turn either in a protected mode, which means you have an arrow and there's nobody posing you and then there's the permitted where the other traffic is going, where you could still go left, I think it's as simple as taking some of that permitted time, moving more time to the protected time. So there's an answer there, we didn't make it a recommendation because we don't think we're impacting it, going back to that word impact by just adding a couple of vehicular trips, but it's something that could be resolved.
I mean, there's in your study, the additional trips provided that will potentially be created by the site, did it downgrade any intersections?
Intersections all stayed the same, even this movement is already an F based on our analysis, I think there was one other movement, not intersection, but one lane that went from a C to a D and if you know levels of the surface, there's step functions, so it's based on delay, so if you had fifteen seconds delay to twenty five, for example, you want level of service, if you go to twenty five point one, it goes to the next level of service, so in our opinion, level of service C to D in this particular case is not a remarkable impact, anything that we think would be mitigated, the rest, all the movements, all the other intersections remain the same and they're all currently mostly of the surface Bs and Cs, there are some Bs.
Commissioner Harrison.
I just had a quick question, can you clarify those degrees that you were just referencing?
Sure. Sure.
Well, they mean just to the, to the lights, if you don't mind.
It gives you the. They're slightly different for unsignalized, but I'll give you the signalized, because that will give you the, the flavor of what they mean. So the levels of service are based on the amount of time you have to wait to make your maneuver, so on a signalized intersection, on average, everybody that's coming on a certain lane in that signal, we can calculate how long it takes you to get through the intersection, on average, some, sometimes you pull up and it's green and you go, sometimes you get there right at the end of green, you gotta sit there for the whole thirty seconds or forty seconds, so we calculate that, and level of service A means that, on average, your, your delay at that light is ten seconds or less, a level of service B is between ten and thirty-five, level of service C is twenty and thirty-five, level of service D is thirty-five and fifty-five, E is fifty-five to eighty, and anything over eighty is considered level of service F.
That's helpful, thank you.
And unsignalized have a little bit lower thresholds, just because it's thought that when you're at a light, you don't have the anxiety that you don't do it unsignalized, so eighty seconds seems more drastic at an unsignalized location, where you're doing this for eighty seconds, so.
Commissioner Brown? I'm confused about our signalized versus unsignalized.
Our driveway is.
For signalized, would have no bearing, because you're just waiting for a light to turn, right?
Yes, well, it has a bearing, because if, if it's part of your trip, so if you're going from, from A to B.
You might wait for two or three lights if there's too many people coming out.
Or, or how efficient is the light itself? Not a lot of traffic, I'll, I'll try not to get too deep into the weeds, but if there's a lot of traffic on the main road, it'll use all of its green time, so it might say the main road gets thirty seconds, but if there's only enough traffic out there that they only need twenty, it'll go over to the next phase of green, so.
You have to throw two lights then, if there's, if this generates too much traffic. And then, so the one that went down would be Black Rock, I'm looking at the traffic report, page seven, actually, page seven, not document page seven, so Black Rock Turnpike, Brewster, Ash Creek, and that is where the entrance to this is, on the corner of Ash Creek and Black Rock Turnpike. So can you go through that chart, just explain these different, eastbound, westbound, northbound? Which ones go down, the top one goes down from C to D, so when you look at if it says background, that's how it is now, combined means what it would change when you add this to it? Based on trip generation, you would expect at peak hours, okay, so trip generation is one foundational assumption, that that is already accurate, that's not understated or anything, but then, when you look at Black Rock Turnpike, sorry, at Ash Creek, that's the closest street intersection that exists now to where the Tgress will be to this property.
Correct.
And I would assume most people coming out would go towards Ash Creek, not towards the parking lot?
Actually, we're.
I would think most people that are, that live here are not gonna park in the metro center parking lot, they're gonna take a left to Ash Creek. I, I'm, it says Black Rock Turnpike slash Brewster Street, and Ash Creek Boulevard, Bullard Square, South Drive Way, is that the intersection, that's the intersection of Ash Creek and Black Rock Turnpike? It's also the dividing line almost to Bridgeport, okay, so eastbound, left through, what, what, where are you coming from and to there?
So the orientation, this is kind of tricky, because north is kind of diagonal.
Which road are you coming off of, you're coming off of, eastbound tells me you're going towards Bridgeport? Are you taking a left off of Ash Creek?
Eastbound in this, in this particular case, is coming out of Ash Creek.
Taking a left on Black Rock Turnpike?
Taking a left or a right, so it's a right turn.
Going out Ash Creek, Ash Creek and Bridgeport is to your right, illicit is way up to your left, and then you're gonna take a left in front of BJ's, basically, going north on Black Rock Turnpike. Well, he says eastbound.
Well, you're eastbound, you're eastbound on Ash Creek, and then after you turn, you're going northbound or south.
So when it goes to a C to a D, that's when you're coming out of Ash Creek Boulevard, taking a left going up Black Rock Turnpike?
Yes.
Okay, and why does that go from, there's no signal there, that's only a.
There is a signal there.
Traffic light?
Yes.
Oh.
And it's also interconnected with the BJ's traffic light, so it's.
Although BJ's is a little bit staggered, it's not directly.
There are two separate intersections, but they're on the same, they're called clustered intersections, so they kind of operate together.
And then, and that's in the morning, in the afternoon, it goes from a D to a D, which stays the same, but pretty bad, I guess, but why does it go from?
D is not terrible.
D?
D is not terrible during a peak hour.
That's fifty, thirty-five to fifty-five, okay.
The intersection, the intersection as a whole is operating at level surface As and Bs during the peak hours, so you're trying to balance everything, and typically, a C or D is what you would expect from the side street, so that the arterials flow more freely, and in this case, we have As and Bs on Black Rock Turnpike. We could steal some time from Black Rock Turnpike and give it to Ash Creek, but when we do that, we have to give that time also to BJ's, because BJ's is part of the signal, and they operate on the same controller, so I give some side street time here, I gotta give it there, and frankly, the small increase in delay from the twenty or so vehicles that are now going through the intersection, to me, doesn't warrant it, I don't consider that a significant impact, it could be, it could be done, certainly, with some timing changes, but frankly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I didn't recommend any timing changes there.
And if traffic is backed up through a couple of light cycles, how far, does that go across the front of this building?
No, we, we looked at the queues, and the queues are determined as average queues, and ninety-fifth percentile, which is you could consider the max queue, after this development is in, the average queue will be about seventy feet from the stop bar, which is not even to our far Easterly driveway, our far Easterly driveway is about a hundred and fifty feet wide.
Because, that's because you have quite a bit between the building and Black Rock Turnpike, you, you have that other parking lot, for example, you don't own.
So it's about a hundred and twenty.
Okay, that's good to know, I didn't want to envision cars backed up all the way to this building. And then as far as the trip generation, we I tend to think that trip generation is usually underestimated on these, because it's not specific to, you know, its national averages, it can include many other places that have nothing to do with Fairfield, it's not based on data from our town, basically, it seems to me that two hundred and forty-five units, consisting of three hundred and fifty-seven bedrooms, plus six thousand square feet of, you're calling a general office building, do we know how, what the capacity is of public that might be using that? Because if it's people in the building, they're not gonna drive to go there, if it's people outside, it's publicly available, how many units does six hundred, six thousand square feet of co-working space have, what's the capacity, I guess, of the co-working space? Is it like twenty cubicles, or?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So you just go by square footage?
Answer, but yes, we're using square footage, and reflective of what an office building would have in terms of employee density. So I could certainly get you that, that information, but I just don't have it handy.
So, okay, if thirty-six seems low to me, or fifty-one going out, when you have maybe there's fifteen, ten people using the co-space, I don't know, and three hundred and fifty-seven people living in the other, it seems low to me close to rail transit? How, how does that assumption go that that's the category you use for the site generation? Does that relate specifically to the traffic service level at the intersection right there?
Yes, okay, let me try to step back and take. In terms of the industry data, in the past, we've checked these locally.
I'm sorry, could you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, we, we've checked this locally, and as time has gone on, older data tends to be more conservative, because you have less and less multimodal trips in those days, it got to the point where the recent generations of this, this, they call it trip generation manual, they've split it up, and they've started separating the data by close to transit, suburban, urban, so that the old data used to have all of that when nobody did anything except drive to work, nobody worked from home, nobody rode their bikes, so that data goes back quite a few years. So they have broken it up, and typically, for a TOD, you would want to be within half a mile walking distance, which were well on the inside of that, being a TOD. What the data does not include is the, the workspace, because that's another reduction that you would have that hasn't come off these numbers yet, so we've added office space as if this was a six thousand square foot office that had no relationship to the residential, and a residential.
It's a conservative way of looking at it.
Conservative way. In a residential, we assumed everybody going to work was actually going to work, and nobody was working there, so with both of those things, and the way, the way the trends have been going, I would say if we did a follow-up study, we would probably find these estimates to be very, very reasonable.
Okay, and I don't know if you went through your, the speed and sightline yet, could you just maybe explain that a little bit?
Yeah, that's my.
Oh, sorry, did I interrupt in the middle of your?
No. I have no predetermined thing here, so there's two more boxes, one is the, the town is planning an RFP, and we've been in contact locating that such that it's crossing Ash Creek Boulevard in the location.
What's RFP?
Oh, I'm sorry, a red, a red flag and flashing P, and it's when you press the button.
Oh, for pedestrians, okay.
Sorry, where's that? So that was every, and.
See it on this map here, and where the line is, whatever.
Show me, does that mean?
So it's.
It's up in the, the last, where this arc.
It's a level of safety with the crosswalk, where you, that you gotta be crossing the street, motorists, seeing the flashing lights.
It's, it's shown on, I'm sorry, it's shown on the, the second landscape plan that had the blue circulation.
You can see it here too, probably as well as what you're describing.
Right, where the callout is, and so this is something that's not as planned and has funding for, and this was one of the locations, we just worked with them, I think we're removing it from where the, just the crosswalk is, to the other side of the driveway, where it serves the train station and this development, our sidewalk system, train station sidewalk system.
Pulls it away from the intersection a bit too, doesn't it?
Yes.
I'm a bit confused, the RFP looks like it's on Brewster and Camfield, oh no, I see the arrow over there. Oh, that just crosses Ash Creek to the public metro center open space area, okay.
So then, with the sightlines, so very close to the intersection, so the sightlines are probably speeds that are relatively low, but the posted speed limit's twenty-five or two eighty, and other than from the Easterly driveway, it's limited by the intersection, coming very slowly, standards for at least five miles an hour beyond DOT requirements for the sightlines of both of these driveways.
Could you explain that a little bit more, please?
Sure, so the sightline requirements are, are determined by a table, and ConDOT has taken these formulas and made it easy for the consultants, and it's based on federal standards and calculations, and they say the speed on the road is twenty-five miles an hour, for example, you should be able to see two hundred and eighty feet to be able to make a informed decision on whether you should go or not. Speed gets lower, the requirement gets shorter, speed get higher, requirements get higher, so in this particular case, we sightline measurements were at least three hundred and fifty feet, and they're shown, that report, the three hundred and fifty foot line on it, except when you're looking left from our motorway, it's three hundred and fifty feet, would put you across the street somewhere. So you could see all of the approaches on the intersection, and we estimate that probably we'd need somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five feet, because those turns are being made somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, ten to fifteen miles an hour.
Did the town engineer look at the sightline calculations and?
Yes, we gave, we, we provided a copy of all the calculations, and I heard nothing.
And how does a sightline, because I was curious about this early on, when you have a sightline that goes right into the intersection, and as you said, expecting whatever you said, two, let's just say two hundred feet, you only got a hundred feet to the intersection, what's the standards that go with that?
Well, we have about a hundred and thirty-seven feet to the curb line, the intersection, but you could see right turning vehicles further back and left turning vehicles when they start to maneuver, so what we, we rely on is what speed the right turns are typically made between nine and eleven miles an hour, left turns are usually made between twelve and fifteen.
Do you use what, intersection or, or stop distance?
Intersection, which is much more conservative one.
It is a call again, intersection.
Yes, intersection sight distance, stopping sight distance.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner, oh, down here, sorry. Yeah, true, I'm sorry, all right, so I commute to Fairfield Metro every day, from Fairfield Metro to Stanford. And I can tell you that a parking lot on Mondays and Fridays is probably less than forty percent occupied, and.
Can you speak up a little, I can't?
On Mondays and Fridays, I would say that parking lot is less than forty percent occupied, and I'd say on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, it's probably about forty percent, there's a ton of parking available, so my thought process here is I know you're looking at the traffic impact of this development to this location, but has anyone looked at fact that I think that once this becomes more developed, because I think one reason why many people still don't go to Fairfield Metro is there's no bathrooms there, there's one coffee shop there where you can get a cup of coffee, but when this, when I look at the totality of this development and the walkability and everything, and the attractiveness that it would bear, you would think it would offload the traffic to Fairfield proper, its train station, because there would be more of a dispersion of traffic, more people going to Fairfield Metro to commute, also, it's the first stop before you get to Fairfield, and you always get a seat as well, so I just, has anyone looked at the positive impact that it would have on downtown Fairfield traffic to downfall, downtown Fairfield Train Station, which is way over, way overpopulated from a parking lot perspective, people on a waiting list to get a parking pass, so I just, any thought processes to would there be more of a proportion and, and offload and traffic to downtown Fairfield?
Well. Directly for this project, I guess I'm, I'm struggling to see the connection of this project would have that, that impact, because the people using, I don't know why they wouldn't use the Metro, Fairfield Metro, and they could walk to it.
Right.
Already, so they're not gonna drive to a parking lot, unless it's boring on or something.
I'm just wondering why more people wouldn't drive to Fairfield Metro and park there versus driving to.
I, I understand that, yeah, that's. And I understand that, yeah, that's, I, I, that's nothing we studied here, but I understand completely.
Just thinking conceptually, right? Okay.
Commissioner Randolph.
Um, we recently passed a ordinance that requires consideration of bicycle and pedestrian. Was that, did the township, did town, town engineer um review it for? Review, and I, this might be a landscape and a uh graphic study. I didn't see anything in the traffic report about.
Don't think that's effective yet, is it? Didn't they have to bring in a uh, for the new pedestrian safety?
You're, you're, uh, you're referring to like a pet access. I think what you're referring to, Mr. Chairman, maybe the complete streets.
That's what I'm thinking, complete streets, is that what you're referring to?
Uh, well, I, I know that on previous, uh, on, on the previous uh review, the engineer did review bicycle and pedestrian um access and looked at traffic calming measures. I just wanted to, to encourage the team to uh make those considerations for traffic calming uh and potentially incorporate the new uh M U T standards.
So um, it, there are bike amenities.
Um, I was really thinking more for pedestrian um to make that as a, a consideration because as I said earlier, a lot of people walk here and it's, it's a very unpleasant place to walk people, there's, it's, if you could make sure that's a consideration.
Yeah, and I think Eric, Eric um had mentioned some, some of that stuff.
Uh, just to respond to that, because it's something we do think about.
Um, I want you to jump over there so I can get you a camera.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so as it relates to pedestrian safety and connectivity, we went over that um, that, that exhibit that showed those various corridors for, you know, pedestrian safety and getting throughout the site and throughout different parts of the district, specifically going to the train track. On, on, on bicycles, we always do, I should have mentioned this, I didn't. We always do a share, we do a branded shared bike program. So we uh, we do promote, you know, bicycle connectivity and the use of bikes, which I think for this site is gonna be critically important. Usually what we do is we stamp the brand, you know, logo on fifteen, twenty bikes uh that allow people to take them and bring them back and um, so.
That's, that's, that's excellent. My question was a little more tactical. It's really the turning radius coming out of the, I guess, the western driveway, it looks like it's hatched right there, I don't know if that's a raised area. Or I, I just would, would request that the, the pedestrian movement, especially since a lot of people will be walking through this area, be optimized.
Uh, and the R R F B helps with that because it is, not only does it act as a traffic calming device, but it is a pedestrian safety device. And I think Eric took down some notes about the, the trees along there.
Yep.
I will point out that I may have a little tug of war with them because I can't have those trees in my sightlines, so.
They're, they're going there.
Uh, not my sightline.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you for your thoughtful, and, and by the way, traffic engineers are so underappreciated, it's such a difficult, it's such a difficult uh process work, but, well, I appreciate it.
I just have a question. Well, I'm, I should just compliment, so then. I thought he was getting packed up to leave.
I thought I was.
So could you just summarize again, the I S D and the S S D and what was the actual speed limit versus the posted speed limit and what the requirement is and what we have? I, I say, I know it says we have two hundred and eighty feet of view um looking left um when you're entering, when you're exiting. Um. When you're exiting from the east side driveway, that's closer to Blackbird Turnpike, looking left towards the intersection with Blackbird Turnpike, you have over two hundred and eighty feet sightline. Isn't, I don't understand that because the intersection is less than that, so I don't understand how you have two hundred and eighty feet.
Um, all right, let me um, let me walk through the um sightlines themselves.
Great.
Intersection sight distance is if you're sitting at the driveway, want it to go up onto Ash Creek um Boulevard. And the distance is based on the speed, so at two hundred and eighty feet for that car to travel at twenty-five miles an hour till it gets to you, that gives you enough time when you're the person at the driveway to see it, to react, put your foot on the gas, into the travel lane, start traveling. In this particular case, I'm looking right and left, but I'm taking a left to get into the traffic stream, so this car doesn't need to stop.
And that's intersection sight.
That's intersection.
And that's, we need, what's the, we have two hundred and eighty, what we need?
Twenty-five miles an hour, two hundred and eighty.
We have exactly two hundred and eighty or more?
We have more than that.
How much we have or?
Um, I do know we have at least three fifty, um, in some cases more, but we do.
Doesn't that go beyond the intersection you were talking about?
Well, the, in the directions, looking to the right and from the westerly driveway, looking left, we could see the intersection. From the easterly driveway, we could see to the intersection, but that is not two hundred and eighty feet. That's a hundred and thirty-seven.
That's what I got confused about.
To the, the beginning of that.
And did you do actual speed measurements?
We did not do a speed count.
And is that, why is that?
Um, it's very near the intersection and the data probably the, the traffic coming.
From the intersection?
The intersection is gonna be slower and our driveways are at a location near the signal where they're almost always slowing down stops. So we uh intuitively thought uh twenty-five miles an hour was probably fine, then we checked it for.
But someone, and no one comes through? Is there anything on the other side of that intersection?
There's the service drive that goes back to the theater.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so you're not gonna speed through that and go forty miles an hour?
It's also offset, so if you're gonna speed through it, you have a zip.
So you're saying somebody who's coming down from the intersection is not gonna be going even twenty-five miles an hour because they're coming from an intersection, they're not coming just down the road.
Correct.
Or speeding through a light.
Correct.
Okay.
The ones coming towards the light are slowing for the light.
And how does that compare to S S D? Could you explain what S S D is?
S S D is the, is kind of the.
S S D for him?
Stopping site distance.
Okay.
So now I'm the driver that's on Ash Creek Road.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm driving along and I'm going towards the light. There's a certain amount of time I need to see something. The old days, they used to call it a ball rolling across the street, meaning there's a kid. So it, enough time to see the ball, react, stop my car before getting to that ball. And that's always, not always, but it's usually a lesser distance. So in, in this particular case, you need about two hundred and fifty feet of stopping sight distance um for that car to, to see some type of thing.
Going in either direction.
Going in either direction.
Are coming from Blackbird Turnpike or coming from the train station?
Right, and that again is based on twenty-five miles an hour. If he's going fifteen miles an hour, ten miles an hour, you need a lesser distance.
That's good explanation, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. We had some earlier questions for the environmental, so.
Cause anyhow, before I have one, one little housekeeping item and then is, is Jay Saltis is here, does anybody have any questions for him?
I asked, Commissioner Braun had asked a question, I forget what it was, but it looks like he remembers. Is someone gonna present the storm drainage system to us or?
That was, that was already presented.
Mr. Ramon of the Civil Engineering way back when.
Uh, Jay is our licensed environmental professional, he's gonna oversee the remediation of the site.
So if anybody has any questions.
Have any specific presentation, we just wanted him to come here if anybody had any questions, it's.
Oh, yeah, there was a question asked earlier, so.
Yeah.
Uh, turn it down, your housekeeping.
Yeah, the housekeeping is just, i- i- in your package is sheet A O O six. And I, I, I think it was alluded to uh by Mr. Montelli, but we i- i- in, in the continuing spirit of cooperation uh with our neighbor, I know he mentioned that we actually gave a piece of our property, you know, for illicit. I just want to make it clear because I don't know that I, we did. By doing that, we're able to move the driveway, uh, so we will have a joint driveway at that location with illicit.
What section are, are you in on?
This is in your package, it's sort, it's page A O point zero six, shared parking diagram.
It's in the exhibit section?
It's in the exhibit section, yes.
Six or seven sheets deep.
Okay, so we, I guess we're patting ourselves on the back a little bit, but to just amplify Mr. Montelli's comments by giving that piece of proper, property, we're able to relocate that driveway i- i- to a better location. Uh, and that will be a shared driveway. And on that sheet that I just referenced, we show the shared access parking reduction, which is obviously part of your regu- your regulations, uh, and I just wanted to make sure that we made that clear.
Yeah, wh- when we made that concession to help increase their site's circulation around their property, we lost twenty-four spaces that we otherwise would have had in our plan. I think one of the summary points here is that in our parking count calculation, which is allowed per the text, we are uh, we are not being penalized for those twenty-four lost parking spaces because we gave it to uh, you know, the purpose of nearby.
As it currently exists, right off of Ash Creek is an entrance into the, what is, would be the illicit brewery. You are removing that and making it a joint entrance.
Correct, correct.
That's part of why, okay, makes it easier so there's not literally two driveways right next to each other.
Yeah, it was something that the town wanted us to do and I just thought I should make that clear. And I should also make clear that we did uh put in the shared parking access reduction and that's covered under your regs. That was my housekeeping.
One, one clarification on that, so would, would um users of the retail space be permitted to park in the, in the brewery parking lot? No.
Or vice versa, sure.
Correct.
I'm sorry, can you clarify again? I'm not following, so this, this driveway that's going down the entire building, that's the shared driveway that you're referring to?
Um, and you had.
Is it on that sheet, A I O six, is that it?
Are you, your, your, it's right here. Is this where, is this where you're talking?
It's right here.
Yeah.
For illicit and for eighty-one.
See how it goes right off?
Turn it. Everything to go one, one sheet back, you'll see.
Not, it's not on that.
It's, so.
Go off.
Ash Creek Boulevard is right here. And this isn't showing it probably.
What's wrong is that?
It's A O six, A.
Do you have it there, Commissioner Bukowski?
I do, yes, I'm looking at it, yes.
See how it goes off of Ash Creek into what could be like a four-way intersection?
Yes.
Now, the, the right is where it goes into uh illicit. That's the only thing in the back, as it goes straight through, that's all theirs.
Okay.
The only shared component is that one little turn into illicit's parking lot.
Got it, so the twenty-four spaces, because it's saying that you require three O seven for the residential units, right? That's what I'm confused about, so then.
So.
So then, short five, is that what you're saying?
We're, we're compliant with parking. In the summary table that shows our compliance, one component of that is just highlighting that we aren't being penalized for twenty-four spaces that we otherwise could have had on our site. Or in this area right here.
Commissioner Bukowski, they haven't, if we hadn't given them.
If we haven't given them that land to increase their site circulation. We're just showing that we don't have those twenty-four parking spaces now. For the regulations, we aren't penalized for that, we're just illustrating in the calculations that demonstrates that we are parking compliant, how we, how we got there.
Right, we, we're not, we, the twenty-four spaces do not take us out of parking compliance.
Okay, but people from your building can still park there and will park there.
Uh, are, so this is illicit's parking lot? Nobody from our community can, can park here.
But on that, but on that drive, those are our, all parking spaces going down.
These are not parking spaces.
Not, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading them as parking.
Those are the spaces they could have provided, those are the twenty-four spaces that we fore, we foregone.
Oh, I thought it was like a narrow lane and that, that those were all.
No, the reason we can't do them right now is because you need to have, you know, access for the fire trucks and whatnot and we weren't compliant with that if we did not, it, when, once we gave that land up, so we had to rejigger everything.
And your regs encourage that. I mean, your regs encouraged, encouraged shared access of this type and, and that's why you broke them the way you did, but we just, I just figured maybe it was good that we should make that clear.
Okay, so then, sorry.
Well, go ahead, finish.
Um, so if I do ever get to use the cowork space, I would probably park in the train station or?
I would encourage you to park right in front of the cowork space on our property. On their property.
All right, okay, where are the entrances on either side?
Here, here.
Yeah, okay, great.
In here.
Yep.
Probably gonna have some wayfinding in this little bay right here saying for cowork. Worst case scenario, if it's open flown, have some, figure out wayfinding over here.
Okay.
Primary, you'll be right in front.
Okay, okay.
Forward to see you there.
Parasum.
Question, Mr. Montelli, what's the capacity of the coworking space? I'm just curious.
It's a good question. I think you um on six thousand feet, i- i- it's a, there's a little bit of a Rubik's Cube for the large office spaces, they usually outfit it for, you know, seventy to a hundred square feet per person. For the little micro offices that you're in there personally, it's much smaller. Um, so we'd obviously have to be co-compliant with, with square footage of space. I, I don't know off the top of my head how many.
Fine, I was just, I was just curious.
Commissioner Braun. Is there going to be an issue with parking? So do we have, are you saying we do not meet our regulations for parking or we?
Do meet your regulations.
We do.
Even with the twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So you're not concerned about overflow parking for residents there or guests?
We don't fly with the regs, but we, based upon experience at other complexes, we're very comfortable.
You can't park on the street there, you'd have to park in the metro center if you don't.
Very comfortable with the parking issue for the, for the tenants.
Thank you.
So.
Well, we had a, I know Commissioner Braun had a question.
This is it.
I'm sorry.
I see, I do see us potentially parking in the metro center, right? Like, so would there be a possibility of putting another entrance on this backside into this, this walkway area that you've created on the backside of the building?
Along, along this, along this area?
Right, I see how it, you can go all the way to the end and enter that way. It seems like you'd have to go to either all the way around to the front of the building or all the way to the end, unless I'm reading this incorrectly.
No, it's a great idea and we have a very good relationship with uh DOT. So enhancing that sort of pedestrian, you know, connectivity in that little micro location.
Exact.
It's a good idea.
Right, right, or, and even like along, actually, I think the map I'm looking at doesn't have an entrance, but it does. Like if you go down that line, so if you follow that line going toward the top of the screen, you know, that, that's where I'm also thinking. But, right.
We, we, it's a very good point.
We have no objection i- i- to, you know, condition of approval that encourages the applicant to engage in the, a dialogue to that effect with the DOT. Obviously, we have to get the DOT's permission. I would hope they would not have a problem with that. So, you know, we, we couldn't guarantee it as a condition of approval because it relies on their approval, but we have no objection to a condition of approval mandating that we make effort to obtain their permission.
Huh? Recommendation then?
Yeah, we've done, we did that, but on something else, not.
I mean, yeah.
Uh?
I am the deal with. Well, that's why we can't say we'll do it.
There too.
Yeah, that's, so. Okay, on to the next.
So this is uh Jay, Jay Saltis, who is a principal at Reef Environmental LLC and he is our uh L E, L E P on this project. And if there are questions that.
Remember Commissioner Braun's earlier question?
Yeah, that was about just what we were doing as far as the remediation, the general remediation. So I don't have any slides or anything showing.
Let's just go right ahead.
Yeah.
And the status of it and the funding, all that.
Sure, sure. Um, I know they've been approved for a grant from the state of Brown Fields redevelopment grant. I don't know where that's headed. Um, but I can tell you is investigation of the site, it's a little unique compared to the adjacent properties in that we, we know the history of this property a little better, but we know this was in a, an assembly, final assembly and a shipping building. So this wasn't part of the foundry, this wasn't anything, it was quite as heavy industrial as, as the rest of the Bullard property. Um, that being said, we do have a lot of fill primarily on the front of the site along Ash Creek. And as we move back across the site, it, we have shallow bedrock. And one saving grace we have on this property. And one saving grace we have on this property is that we have a, it's a partial basement that's about half the length of the pad that's left there. And that was Bullard's cafeteria and then some storage behind it. And much like the neighboring properties, what's driving the remediation here is low-level PCB contamination. Um, again, primarily along Ash Creek. And unlike the other properties where it made sense from a cost benefit perspective to cap it in place, do all the additional testing, this one takes more sense to dig and haul because our volumes are just not as substantial as they were on the other properties. Our goal will be RSR compliance, we'll have the DEP involved, likely be involved with the voluntary remediation program. Your mediation standards as for any industrial property will apply, and that's, that's our end point.
I just want to reiterate what I, I said when we were talking about drainage, that we ob- obviously unequivocally have to achieve regulatory closure pursuant under, uh, Jay's leadership with the D, the DEP standards. We don't have any option in that regard, uh, the site in order to be redeveloped for what we propose, which is mixed-use multifamily. It's gotta be remediated, uh, up to the EEP standards. Uh, we can't finance the project, uh, for purposes of doing that unless we've obtained it. So it's, it's a priority for us, uh, as soon as we've gained our approvals and as soon, from you, and as soon as we close on the property, which we will do promptly after obtaining approval. And we, I should also add, we've worked very closely with the economic, uh, town economic, uh, development department and Mr. Barnhart to secure the financing, uh, that we have for this. So it's, it's something that is, uh, we're gonna have to do, and we will do in accordance with all the C standards.
Commissioner Braun.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. So I, something Mark Barnhart said, some of the material that, or somewhere I read, um, when we got the, it was like a three million dollar grant to do the remediation, or I don't know if that's the town or is it you, who gets the grant? And if Mark Barnhart said, we don't know if we can use the grant because it might have very onerous conditions. Can you explain any of that to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, when we initially started exploring this grant, it was in the realm of three million dollars. Um, and it's coming from the state of Connecticut. In our past experiences with grants in Massachusetts, it was a grant. In Connecticut, there are three conditions of this grant that we're sort of still analyzing. That's why it's kind of, you're hearing from Mark that we may or we, we may not. The first condition, if you take that grant money, is, uh, what are called negative covenants. What that means basically is that the state has a seat at the business table for major business decisions. Okay? The second is, uh, a requirement for higher, higher affordability. And the third is that the Department of Labor would require the entire project, not just the remediation, but the entire project, to be subject to Davis Bacon prevailing wages. That's analogous essentially to the premium that union wages has. So in conclusion, the analysis that we're trying to figure out is how or why it makes sense to take a three million dollar grant to then add twenty-five million dollars of hard cost.
You think it would cost twenty-five million to do what they want you to do?
No, the difference between open shop wages and labor for a project of this size versus Davis Bacon is about twenty million dollars. So the state is asking for us to accept, the, the state is offering a grant, but in taking that three million dollars, you have a new business partner, and your project cost just went up twenty million dollars. So if I had to explain that to investors and lenders, I might have a tough time.
And the three million dollars, is that the actual cost to do the remediation project itself without all those extras, like?
Correct, it's our.
It's what it costs you if you did it?
Yes.
Right.
Right now, you're coming to us with twelve percent. I think the grant was what, twenty percent affordability?
Yeah, and there were strings of the state can be flexible, and that's also one of the reasons why we've been talking about this for so long. But yes, it was increased and affordable at, at various levels too.
If that, so you haven't made the decision of taking the grant yet. Should you take the grant, do you have to come back to us with a change with affordability, or is it?
No, we would not. Yeah, so it's a little complex, but I hope that.
Uh, and, um, it's very interesting, yeah.
Um, I, I agree.
And as far as the type of remediation, my concern is, in the drainage, and I'm not any drainage expert, so. Drainage report says there's no detention, there's only water quality improvements. Which I don't really understand, but then I need to understand what is the remediation that's being done. I, when we came for the concept review, I don't know, a long time ago, last May or April, it was discussed that it would be a cap, I think. But that's no longer happening, it's gonna be completely cleaned out of any contamination, so that cap being used.
Right, if anything, so the PCBs we have to deal with, that's not negotiable.
Had to be done at Metro Center also. It was the other contamination that they allowed to be left behind and cap over it.
And this, there's a potential for that type of cap.
Sand castings.
That wouldn't require any type of membrane or anything like that. It would strictly be, be under pavement. If it meets certain criteria, it'd be under a building, under pavement.
Okay.
Usually runs problems, yeah, concrete slab, usually structural building, so it most likely be under parking.
There's no component of this building that's underground, because on Metro Center, they're digging, they said they have a negative pressure air system so that, you know, because they're digging in to the contaminated soil, and they didn't want any. Gold sploons for.
For intrusion and all that.
But no- nothing here is underground.
Correct.
It's all on top.
We don't have any volatile, so nothing.
Basically, the slab that's under your building is sitting on top and acting like a cap. Is that kind of like, is it, does any of that, well, you're cleaning it up anyway.
Oh, partially. PCBs, yes, we're definitely dealing.
What, what else is there other than PCBs?
You should.
Because on the Metro Center side, it was all sand castings, which is like coal tar or something like.
This one's interesting because the front, we have a deep, very deep fill in the front, and then as we go across the site, it becomes bedrock. So I think, my guess is originally.
No contamination.
My guess is originally they planned on a full basement, and then they ran into this rock, stopped the basement about halfway through the building.
So when you demolish the building, you might find some contamination leaking out somewhere?
We've already tested through the slab in that area.
There's no contamination where the building is?
There's some, there's, there's pockets here and there, but it's very localized.
So in the other area that's not part of the building, and I'm thinking like the area surrounding it or like that open space area that I like, that could have.
Probably is.
Be similar to the Metro Center, like, it was, remember, in the Metro Center, they actually created like eight acres of land by dumping sand castings into Ash Creek, you know, fifty years ago.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a fuller area on our site, it's just that front section, but that's, that would be.
That's actually the part that I was talking about before. So there's a possi, is there a possibility then that that little public area that I thought would be nice as open space could be, have to be kept, or would, how would that be handled?
That's, that's where the PCBs are.
You don't know yet.
No, it's where the PCBs are. PCBs are in that area that they've been talking about, and that's federally regulated, and they have to be disposed of.
Right, but if it's not PCBs, but if it's other stuff, does the whole thing get capped then, or?
Can be.
Because that's what happened with the Metro, they could get rid of the PCBs, but they could cap the other stuff, I don't know why.
It all depends on what it is, like, we didn't have that.
You don't really know what you can do there until you know, you know that.
Of, we've, we've.
It's all been tested, right?
Yeah.
What stage is it at with DEP right now?
Uh, it isn't with them, no.
Oh, because you have to wait to figure out the.
Start the remediation process until you own the land.
You don't know yet what DEP is gonna require.
No, we do. Jay has done, Jay has done, uh, three very robust soil and environmental subsurface reporting tests already. We know exactly what we need to do. We haven't started it yet because we don't own the land yet. We'll own the land once we close on it for, after approvals.
And, and, and I would respectfully remind the record and the commission that we are here under a planning and zoning special permit and site plan approval, uh, and that the DEP remediation process is one that, you know, we'll have to go through uh, under the supervision of the DEP. So I, I, you know, we're happy to answer all these questions, but I think in terms of the standard of your regulations, um, it's not really relevant to your decision.
Well, I do have a question about that because I'm thinking Metro Center and X I, two other larger mediation projects. There was no zoning application filed until after the mediation was done. Isn't that leaving a lot of unknowns to us?
That's not true.
Yeah, that is true.
There was an inland wetless permit that was required for Fairfield Metro Center, and the inland wetless permit had to be obtained first. And, but the, 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 the Metro Center project was approved exactly in the same sequence zoning-wise before any, um, approved remediation plan was established by the.
So.
Because again, the owner wasn't gonna buy the property until they knew they had the zoning. And, and i- in your scenario, i- i- it won't happen, but was, were this commission to approve this project, as we hope you will, and then something unforeseen happens in terms of DEP, uh, you know, not approving the remediation plan, the project's not gonna get built until the remediation plan is, is approved and the remediation is un, is completed. But it's two separate jurisdictions.
Right.
There's a Supreme Court case that talks about local land use agencies not acting as little environmental protection agencies. That's the quote, and I just don't want to slip into that here.
Well, so if the plans change because of something DEP requires, then you'd have to come back to us.
The plans change from a zoning perspective, yes, sure, absolutely. I mean, if, 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 if the site plan had to materially change or the architecture had to materially change, then yes, we have to come back.
And then as far as the drainage, like, right now, the drainage system has no tension. I don't understand what that means exactly. Maybe I need to follow up with gentleman that spoke about that.
But you presented it earlier. Well, I, well, I mean, it's gonna be part of the record that you can.
I have a question about it. I have a question about if we're capping something and there's no, what hap, where does the water go? If you're capping something? And if you do cap, you can only have trees there, right? Because they'll go through the membrane?
I can still.
I'm saying with Metro Center was you couldn't plant trees.
Let's ask one question at a time instead of scatter shooting here. What's your question, Mr.?
I want to know the relationship between if you did have to cap and the detention system. Where, where does the water go with the detention system? There's no detention.
I'm Pete Romano.
Where's the water go?
It goes into a storm scepter of water, explaining this at the beginning as a first person.
Okay.
The storm scepter there, it's a filter, it cleans, it creates water quality, and then it gets discharged to Ash Creek.
So all the water generated from the site goes directly to Ash Creek? And that includes water from the parking lot?
Everything from that site, the four point eight acres of acre, goes into the storm drainage and discharges to Ash Creek.
And how?
The same system, Mr. Renato, interrupt, but is that the same system that was utilized? Can you again reference the other projects that you've been involved in?
Sure, well, we're involved in Metro. Metro's water quality system is there right now, even though there's no buildings there. And then we did the same thing at, um, Land Rover, which is on the other side of the river.
And what other was there? And trademark, those are all approved projects.
No detention?
Correct. No detention.
So what, tell, tell me what that means when there's no detention?
No water being detained on site.
So what does that mean in reality when there's a rainstorm?
So I explained it at the very beginning. In a situation, so for instance, when you're not at the discharge point, lowest point of the watershed, someplace in northern Fairfield, the, where charge was not increasing the flow off of the site, zero incremental runoff. So the only way you can do that is by detaining it on site and then filter. Two things, you can either meter it, discharge the storm drainage, or you can let it leach into the ground. In this particular instance, we can't let it leach into the ground, and we're at the lowest point of the watershed. It makes the most sense and good engineering practice to just discharge it into Ash Creek so that our peak flow from our site is in Ash Creek before anybody's peak flow from up the watershed reaches our site.
But water quality is provided.
That's what, in this particular instance, it's a water quality issue here. You're charged with cleaning the first one inch of runoff from our site. Said to you before that we're required to do what's called four point one CFS cubic feet per second in order to maintain water quality. If there's a certain quality of the water that needs to get discharged, we're providing twenty-five CFS, six times the amount of water quality improvement.
And I, can I just interrupt? That I can assure you, based especially on the comments that were made by me earlier this evening, that the engineering department, your town engineering department, has made a rigorous review, and Mr. Wen can testify that too, uh, as he's, it's, th- this is nothing new. This is, this is a, a drainage system that's been approved by this commission for the other projects that have been referenced by Mr. Romano. And it is also, this specific proposal has received review and an approval from your engineering department.
I hear you. Would any of that change if you did capping versus not capping?
No, it's an engineering process, two different things.
Not connected.
Not connected.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Done with your presentation?
Yes. Lower summary, no.
I mean, we're done.
No, I'd love to close the hearing if the commission is comfortable. I mean, I don't, I think we've hopefully made a thorough presentation to you. I started out by saying, I'm excited, I'm excited, I'm excited, I am excited, I hope you are too. It's a great development for what will be an anchor piece in the TOD, and I think it'll set a very high and proper standard.
You have this question, sorry. Well, sorry. He has his question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner, sorry.
Okay, I'm sitting back here. Uh, I just, one question, on the affordability plan, is it intended that all the units would be at eighty percent?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I said, that was my, I cut my two-hour summary, so.
I know, I mean, we're, I assume everybody in the bill, in the room is part of your, they are. So we don't have any public comment here.
Um, I, there's material that we still haven't got that I would like to have before we move forward with the hearing. I would like, can we keep it open? Because I'd like to have the code review minutes and another chance to look at the engineering comments, which we just got now. And, um, I'd like to see the, uh, WPCA approval as well.
They're all things that are in the record. I really, respectfully, I don't think that's, that's a reasonable request to the, to the applicant or to your fellow commissioners. I mean, the code review is, is, is in, Mr..
Anybody, let somebody ask. You're done with your initial presentation?
We're done.
Anybody that's. Is for the public wants to speak, because there's nobody of the public, aside from your team, that's in, in the room, right?
Correct.
But, okay, is there anybody that's joining us remotely that wishes to be heard on this application? I don't really, I know we're past our time. Curious to know if there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard. Hold on. Thank you.
Is somebody in the chat?
Nobody in the chat. Is anybody joining us remotely that wishes to be heard, or? Anybody that's on the phone, please press star six. I mean, I think, you know, we've been here for a while, and it's been noticed, um, you know, nobody's here, I've been waiting. I don't think anybody has been on Ms. Harrigan. So, I mean.
Very late.
Public comments, nobody's here, so I'll close the public comments section. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I would just say, I, you know, is there a reason why we couldn't keep it open? I mean, there.
Attorney.
I mean, is there some kind of issue with the approval of, I don't, I'm just curious.
No, I don't think there's any issue to, that requires us to close the hearing, but I'm not really sure why it needs to be kept open either, if we have the things that are ready for us.
I thought Commissioner Braun made some valid points about some material that we would like to see, and.
Can I address that, what, what, the reason I am?
Commissioner Braun.
This is a very large project, maybe one of the largest ones we've ever done. There's multiple facets to it. We have not had a presentation on coastal site plan review either. And we just got engineering comments tonight for the first time. I'd like to have a chance to look at it and ask more questions if I, if we have any.
I'd like to close.
I mean, listen, we had the cam, it was presented to us earlier.
Staff comments since Monday, DEP comments, this is a pre-application as well. It's not the first time we've seen this material. Could I just, I, I, I want to be respectful.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
First time this commission has seen it.
Well, I mean, listen, I mean.
The first time we've had this.
I don't think there's any new material that's been provided that wasn't already provided. Now, I mean, I understand maybe there might have been some code enforcement stuff that wasn't posted, but I, I'm not sure if that's true or not one way or the other. And everything we've given is in line with applications that I've seen in the past. And if you have questions, definitely ask staff, and I don't know if anything more needs to be asked of the applicant.
I've just never. I got this thing tonight from the engineering.
Delay is prejudicial to the applicant.
It's prejudicial to the applicant.
Commissioner Ford said it, that's what, I'll make a motion to close them.
Well, you don't need to make a motion. That's up to me. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to ascertain what exactly we're keeping, what we're hoping for. Um, we have this presented to us. There's been no dispute that the engineering signs off on on this. I mean, I mean, I don't know what. If there's any questions, you can ask, we can ask the staff. If there's any major issues, we can reach out to the applicant if needed, but I just don't understand why we would keep this open. I mean, unless there's a rebuttal, unless you want time for rebuttal, which I'm assuming you don't.
Happy to close.
Yeah, that's right. I assume. So, I mean, well, based on that, I'm gonna close the hearing, this application. And should anything come up, we obviously can reach out to staff and our departments. If anything major shows up, we address it with going to the applicant with questions, but just don't see why we need to be kept open.
Thank you all very much.
Hearing on this application. And that's the end of the hearing on our meeting. So I'll adjourn the hearing.